Good morning, Birmingham. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by shepherdess Betty Byrd of Transformed Ministries, Church of God in Christ, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor J.T. Moore. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning, everybody. This is a day that the Lord has made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. Let us pray. Father God, first of all, we just want to tell you thank you. Thank you for your love. Thank you for your kindness. Thank you for your mercy, and we just thank you for just being God. We thank you for making each and every one of us in this room, every person, every citizen in your image, and we're grateful. We thank you for this great city of Birmingham. We thank you for Mayor Randall Woodfin and for our City Council President Darrell O'Quinn and the members of the Birmingham City Council. We tell you thank you, God. You said in your word that we should pray and intercede for those that are in authority so that we can lead peaceful lives. Lord, I come today praying for this city council, for their wisdom, for their guidance, and for the council members as they deliberate on today's meeting agenda. I pray for safety of this city council and its members as they serve this great community. I pray and thank you again today, God, for this your service. Again, our mayor and our council members. We remember what you told through Paul to the Christians in Rome, that those who are in authority are first more servants. Lord, we thank you for the servants you've placed in Birmingham. We thank you that they're honoring you as they do your business today, and I pray that you will be glorified today through the decisions of this city council, being every decision made to the betterment of this city. Again, we thank you for this city council meeting and for the people you have placed in charge of this business. We are grateful for the opportunity to gather and work together and for your guidance in this meeting. It is my prayer that the council would trust and trust and trust in God and lean not on their own understanding. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage to do what is right for the good of all the citizens of this great city. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. Now, Father God, we thank you again for this city council, our mayor, and the staff who are working in this place to make the city of Birmingham a wonderful city. God, we ask for your grace, your mercy, your kindness over the members and over this meeting today. In the name of Jesus the Christ, we do pray. Amen. Amen.
Could we please have our roll call?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Present.
Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council, at this time, we have before us the minutes of the October 22nd and 29th, 2024 meetings. If there are no additions or corrections, we'll consider a motion to approve those minutes.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, saying nay.
All right, the minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready for the November 5th, 2024, through January 8th, 2025 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor's office.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the entire council. Good to see you all this morning. Good morning to the general public. Two notes today, Mr. President and council. One is the city has a new and improved city's website. It has officially launched. It is designed with residents in mind, businesses as well as visitors. The revamped BirminghamAL.gov makes it easier than ever to access city services, find important information, as well as navigate with ease. I'm going to put some emphasis on that, navigate with ease, whether it's a desktop tablet or mobile device. So again, for you, your constituents, and your individual districts and citywide, for all of our residents, BirminghamAL.gov has officially launched its new website. That's more efficient. And now, I would like to ask Mr. Jimmy Coleman, his family, his friends, other members of the C A B who are present, city team members with the community development department to all come up. Mr. Coleman has a very important announcement to make. He's decided not to retire on us. He just changed his mind. He's going to stay.
As you can see, nobody travels like the mayor of North Birmingham.
I understand. I understand, Mr. Mayor. So council, we wanted to take the time today to celebrate, love home, appreciate, as well as express our sincere gratitude to our beloved resident neighborhood president and the mayor of North Birmingham, a true pillar in our community. And some folk laughing, but this man is literally the mayor of North Birmingham. But he has decided to take his talents in the form of retirement, and we just want to say thank you for everything you've done on behalf of not just North Birmingham, but the city of Birmingham. And I'm going to read this proclamation in part, and it states, "Whereas Mr. Coleman's dedication to his community is a testament of his character, he has been actively involved in numerous neighborhood initiatives since 1977, including serving as an officer and ultimately as president of the Citizens Advisory Board, known as C A B, in 2017. Mr. Coleman's commitment to improving Birmingham's neighborhood has resulted in significant contributions, including his involvement in refurbishing homes, constructing roofs, ramps, decks, and painting homes to create a stronger sense of community. Whereas Jimmy Coleman is a true embodiment of civic pride, selflessness, and dedication, and his tireless contributions to our city and its residents have made Birmingham a better place for all. He truly exemplifies the very spirit of what it means to serve others and be an active part of our collective future. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the City of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby issue this proclamation, and today is known as Mr. Jimmy Coleman Day." And so, as it is now officially Jimmy Coleman Day in the city of Birmingham, we honor you with your outstanding service. We honor you with your commitment, and we honor you with unconditional love that you have had and expressed for the people of Birmingham. May we all be inspired by his example to continue working together to create a stronger, more vibrant community for our generations to come. On a personal note, literally as a kid who grew up in North Birmingham the first 11 years of my life, I just want to tell you, I appreciate you and I love you.
Good morning. Hey, Pop. On the behalf of the city council, I want to present you also with a resolution from myself and my colleagues. I've known you a long, long, long time, and so I know you've told me some stories, you know, and I know the connection that you have with my family, but I want to tell you that, you know, I love you, Ms. Dean, all of the people, Ms. Anna Brown, and you may be retired, but you're not retired from cooking, so you know I'm coming to get me some food. Love you, Pop.
You seem to move the resolution.
Move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Now move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And lastly, on behalf of the Department of Community Development, we also want to thank you because Community Resource Services, our 99 neighborhoods, our leadership are the backbone of the work that we do across the city. Without all of you and your leadership, we really have nothing. And so, you have led the way as far as our community and neighborhood leadership, and we appreciate you for that and want you to. I haven't known you long, but I've known you long enough to know the impact that you've made across the city, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Melanie Martin. I am Mr. Coleman's C R R. Tell me about it. That's our daily conversation. That's how we start in the morning. Tell me about it when I call in to let them know what's going on. We're going to miss you, but hey, I'm from Collegeville, so you know I'll be back to see you. I always come by your house to visit you, and none other than you better have, Ms. Dean. Thank you.
Good morning, council. Mayor. Mr. Coleman took a young boy from Woodland under his wing, and I really appreciate everything that he has done for us. He has led us through a really tough time, a time where there's the sentiment going around that people want to get rid of the 99 and go towards communities. He has always been a champion and fought for the 99. That's 99 opportunities for people to be involved in their own government, and I'm so excited about your next chapter, but we are really going to miss you.
Good morning, everybody. I've been knowing Jimmy ever since 1961 at Lobos Department Store. We was in the midst of the civil rights, him and I, down there doing all the demonstration, and we've been friends ever since, and we just wish him with luck. Congratulations, Jimmy. Thank you.
Wanted Mr. Coleman to have the last word, so if any councilors wanted to go first.
Councilman Clark.
Well, I tell you, troublemaker. I met Jimmy when I came to the mayor's office in 2000, and he has always shown as an exemplary citizen leader, pit master, perfecter of the collard green casserole, real estate tycoon, and just a trendsetter. You know, even before the C R R team came out with the rules about how candidates really can't dominate in the neighborhood meetings, if you went to one of Jimmy's meetings during the political season, he would tell everybody, okay, you can put a card on the back table, you can come up and just say your name and what you're running for. If they want to talk to you, they're going to talk to you after the meeting, but just ran a tight meeting, and I felt like if any, you know, all new presidents should go to a Jimmy Coleman meeting to see how to chair a meeting. So just, you know, you run your, you know, your meetings, and, you know, other people don't get to, to take over, as we sometimes see happen in neighborhood meetings, where it's just hard to keep control of the, you know, so just an expert facilitator as well. So I haven't seen you as much from the C A B role because, you know, I've been represented by my colleagues here, but just really end of an era with you stepping down. So thank you for all you've done over the years, not just for the whole city, you know, but even bringing world changers to your neighborhood consistently and some of those bigger things that you did. So just really going to miss you, and Ms. Dean, thank you for putting up with him, but so really hate to see you go, but I get it. Thank you. Well done.
Councilmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Coleman, man, when I first got in office, North Birmingham actually fell in my district before we had to redistrict, and I was told, like, J.T., you got to go see the mayor of North Birmingham, and I was like, the mayor of North Birmingham, who is that? Who is that? I soon found out, and I met Mr. Jimmy Coleman, and he has always been a strong supporter of mine, but a strong advocate for the city of Birmingham, not even just North Birmingham, but the city of Birmingham. And, you know, it always did my heart good because whenever I saw him, he always tell me, hey, babe, bruh, what's going on? You know, talk to me. And I'm going to miss, well, I ain't going to miss it because I'm going to still come over to your house too, to City Hall Number Two and sit at your kitchen table. But I do want to tell you that I greatly appreciate you. Like my colleague, Ms. Carol, said, you know, you definitely run a tight ship. If you have not been to a Jimmy Coleman meeting, man, you missed out because he ran a well-oil machine and was a voice of reason, could get everybody on the same page, and get everybody in order so that we can do the business of representing the people that elected us. And so, I just want to tell you thank you. Thank you for every word of encouragement and every act of kindness that you've shown towards me and, you know, the folks in District Four.
Councilor Abbott.
What to say about Jimmy Coleman? My goodness, people probably think I've only known you for 23 years. They don't know about the 17 years before that. So Mr. Coleman and I have known each other a long time, and I have to say that he is a leader, a leader who, when he turns around and looks behind him, he's got people following him. You know, some leaders think they're leaders, but when they look behind them, there ain't nobody there. Well, look at everybody who's here. Mr. Coleman is a leader. He told me that he wanted to retire and be with his 11 grandchildren. I congratulate you on that alone. 11 grandchildren is a lot, but I love you. I'm going to miss you, but you're just starting the second half. So it's not like you're leaving. You're going to still come visit with us, and you're still going to be active in the community because I know you, you're not going to go sit in your house. So, you know, mayors have different places they stay at, so I know that you're going to be staying at all over the city of Birmingham and still doing what you do, which is always being willing to help other people. And you've always been willing to help me, and you've always given me those ham hocks when Merrick Kincaid, when Merrick Kincaid got you to cook them every single time there was a football game at Legion Field and probably a lot of times in between. But we're going to miss you as, as the president of the C A B and the various leadership roles you've taken, but I know you can't let it go. You just can't. It's you. It's you inside. So we're going to miss you, and I appreciate the mayor having this, this event to celebrate you because sometimes people just disappear, but you're not disappearing. So just thank you for all you've done and all you're going to do.
Councils member.
Yes, so most of the time, people in their life, you'll see their birth date and their end date, and then there's the dash. And I think you have achieved what a lot of people want, is to leave them behind a legacy, because if you didn't have a legacy, you wouldn't have all these people here. You wouldn't have almost every person in Birmingham know who Jimmy Coleman is. I almost said the same thing as Councilmore. My parents, like, yeah, Jimmy, when I met you as adults, Jimmy Coleman is the mayor of North Birmingham. I was like, huh? I was like, how is that even possible? But you've always helped me and guided me and mentored me, and, you know, you are really a model citizen for what we need in our neighborhoods. And so I'm hoping maybe you can start a mentorship program, especially for young boys, teaching people how to be a leader and a follower as well. So I know, like, Council Abbott, she's someone I'm retiring to, and Carol Clark, y'all, but I feel like we're going to see y'all just as much. So good luck and thank you for everything that you do.
Pro Tem Alexander.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank Mayor Woodfin for giving us this opportunity to share just the wonderful work that Mr. Coleman has done for this community. I want to thank you because when I was first appointed to this role on the city council, you, I attended the newsome meeting, and you helped to show me the value of neighborhoods and what that role it can be, and I appreciate you as being in that leadership role to help new, newbies like me at that time to understand just the importance and the gift that the neighborhoods can give to us. I want to thank you. I'm deeply indebted to you for just, if it hadn't been verbal, it's always been just that support and knowing that it's been out there. Now, there are only a few of us on the council that were born at the time of 1977, 1978. Few folks were in kindergarten, but I do want to thank you. When you talk about that longevity and that service that you provided, this is just giving you your flowers today, and so I just want to say, don't stop, keep it going, and we continue to look forward to working with you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Council Williams.
Yeah, Ms. Coleman, one thing that always impressed me about you specifically, and you stick out more than anybody else on the C A B in this regard, is that no matter what was happening on the east side, which is not your area, but it became your area, you were there to support it. So if it was fishing rodeo, if it was whatever it was, you're there representing the C A B, you're there with a smile on your face and a very positive energy about, you know, what's going on, what the city has going on right for it, not what's going on wrong, and that will always be impressed upon me. Now, I wasn't one of these people that were born in the 70s, and I, and my service is, you know, pales in compared to what you've offered the city of Birmingham, but you are an inspiration to people younger than you, like myself, so thank you for providing that.
So, Mr. Coleman, you know, our stories are tied together. You know, you were there to serve as my vice president when I was president of the C A B, and, you know, I just thank you for your support. You know, you've mentored a lot of leaders in the city, and nobody can deny that, and, you know, folks that probably many of us aren't even aware of, and you've done it in a way that's been humble, you know, you've never sought out the spotlight. I can always trust you, and everyone can always trust you. You know, Jimmy Coleman's going to tell it like it is. Right, and that is truly valuable, but you do it in a way that's jovial, you know, and in a way that makes it a little easier to receive sometimes. So just, you know, truly appreciate your leadership and your contributions that you've made to the city over many, many decades, your service to our country as well. You know, you are the true, a true example of a leader, and kudos.
Thank you so much, council. Before we let my favorite Marine and the mayor of North Birmingham speak, we have one more speaker, and then this young man is next.
Good morning, everyone. Well, I tell you, I became his secretary for the first time 30 years ago, a little over 30 years ago. All of my children were still young and at home, and I became his secretary. And Councilman Smithman, you set a mouthful. We see that birth date, that end date, and you see a dash, but the problem that we have is when we get to that end date, that's when everybody want to tell you how good they were, how much they loved them. It's too late then, they can't hear. So I'm proud to stand here and say to Mr. Coleman, we done fought a whole lot of tanks, okay? We done fought, but listen, we done worked together 10 times more times than we done fought. And one thing that I learned from him is that we can fight on the phone before we get in that meeting, but when we get in that meeting, we on one accord together. And I have learned so many things from you over the years, how to deal with relationships, a lot of things that we seem to take for granted, how to come in and ask for what you want. You don't have to be demanding. You don't have to be rude. Just speak your facts and do what you're going to do. And I want to tell Mr. Coleman, yes, he think he finna retire. Okay, he probably just finna go down to part-time. He's given up the title as president, but he is now the advisor and counselor to beautiful North Birmingham.
Why would you say oh? Well, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Coleman. Your work in the city and the community has been impactful. You've been an advocate for the Community Resource Service Division. You have, you've led the way for a lot of young people, a lot of our people, and we couldn't have done this without you. You've been the voice for the neighborhood, and you've kind of shown people the way to get things done in your neighborhood. So we know you're not retired. We're going to say a little prayer for Ms. Dean because you're going to be at home with her. So I know that's going to be a lot, but we just want to say thank you for always being a light for us and always being an open ear for us. We might not always agree, but you've always been in 100% of support of us, and we know that we can count on you when we have issues, concerns. You've always been open to talk to us about that, and I do want to say we appreciate your legacy because it is important for neighborhoods to be engaged and to understand the importance of neighborhood as well as community. So without you, we wouldn't be able to convey that message. So people know North Birmingham, they know the mayor of North Birmingham because of your commitment, and we hope that spreads throughout the rest of our 99 neighborhoods and 23 communities because it's all a part of the CP plan. Thank you.
First of all, I want to just say thank you, mayor. Council President O'Quinn, I want to thank you twice, you know, or two times. He went to the council, and I had to step up to be the president of the C A B, and I get at him all the time. I said, why did you do that? You know, but anyway, I want to thank you again, and thank you, Pro Tem, and Mr. Hunter, and the Smitherman. I knew when she was crawling around on the floor when her daddy was out here campaigning for us to try to get him in the senate seat, and Ms. Abbott, you never did come and get on the roof for me, but I mean, you said, I'm supporting you all the world changing, metro changing, but I'm not going to get up on that roof. And Mr. Moore, I just want to thank you all, so you came to me and wanted some advice, and I tried my best. Like you said, I'm going to tell it like it is. You're going to have to go and knock on these folks' doors and find out what they want or what they need, not just grab your seat and come, not just talking to you personally. And I have learned so many things from you over the years. How to deal with relationships, a lot of things that we seem to take for granted, how to come in and ask for what you want. You don't have to be demanding, you don't have to be rude, just speak your facts and do what you're gonna do. And I want to tell Mr. Coleman, yes, he think he finna retire. Okay, he probably just finna go down to part-time. He's given up the title as president, but he is now the advisor and counselor to beautiful North Birmingham.
Why would you say, oh? Well, I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Your work in the city and the community has been impactful. You've been an advocate for the Community Resource Service Division. You have, you've led the way for a lot of young people, a lot of our people. And we couldn't have done this without you. You've been the voice for the neighborhood and you've kind of shown people the way to get things done in your neighborhood. So, we know you're not retired, we're gonna say a little prayer for Ms. Dean because you're gonna be at home with her. So, I know that's gonna be a lot. But we just want to say, thank you for always being a light for us and always being an open ear for us. We might not always agree, but you've always been in a hundred percent of support of us and we know that we can count on you when we have issues, concerns. You've always been open to talk to us about that. And I do want to say, we appreciate your legacy because it is important for neighborhoods to be engaged and to understand the importance of neighborhood as well as community. So, without you, we wouldn't be able to convey that message. So, people know North Birmingham, they know the mayor of North Birmingham because of your commitment and we hope that spreads throughout the rest of our ninety-nine neighborhoods and twenty-three communities because it's all a part of the C P plan. Thank you.
First of all, I wanted to say, thank you, mayor. Council President O'Quinn, I want to thank you twice, you know, or two times. He went to the council and I had to step up to be the president of the C A B and I get at him all the time. I said, why did you do that? You know, but anyway, I want to thank you again and thank you, Pro Tem and Mr. Hunter and the Smitherman. I knew when she was crawling around on the floor when her daddy was out here campaigning for us to try to get him in the senate seat. And Ms. Abbott, you never did come and get on the roof for me. But I mean, you said, I'm supporting you all, the world changed and metro changed, but I'm not gonna get up on that roof. And Mr. Moore, I just want to thank you all, so you came to me and wanted some advice and I tried my best. Like you said, I'm gonna tell it like it is. You're gonna have to go and knock on these folks' doors and find out what they want or what they need, not just grab your seat and come, not just talking to you personally now, just grab a seat and come sit down here at City Hall or say, you the council. I hear a lot of people telling me and Carol Clark, you know, when we went, when I, Kincaid, Mayor Kincaid, we had a lot of good times. So, you know, I just want to let everybody know, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you. But to make anything work, you have to get in that back room and fight. And my wife, we get in there and we fight a little bit and when we come out of there, I got about a hand, come on, baby, you know. See, I gotta go back home, you know. But all of my friends, I just want to tell you, I just want to tell you how much I care for you and I've worked with a lot of you every day and my pastor over there, Lewis McCarty and Doug, Doug Anthony Douglas, don't let me get the names wrong because I go to saying too much, mayor, and that I, but when O'Quinn used to come up to the C A B meeting, because he can talk now, he talked more than Jimmy Coleman. He said, I said, you got about two seconds and then you go sit down. Well, I want to tell you all about this, I want to tell you, but I enjoyed it and I just want to make sure, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, I just want to tell you how much I love you, my brother, and how much I appreciate you. And my family have, oh, Lord. I got, I got, I got the star of the show, Stephen Hart, said my, the blood run through my veins, but the air that I breathe is my sugar right here. This was one of my secretaries too in the neighborhood, Tracy Coleman, that's my baby girl. The next one is Halajandro, he's a firefighter for the city of Birmingham. And my sister-in-law is in the back, my wife's sister, Barbara Parrish. And my, everybody, well, let me tell the two grandkids first, oh, let me go to the wife. Tiana is the mother of our two kids, Kyra and Ian James. And everybody know this one, the tall one back here, he's the comedian, he the one, they say he got all that stuff from me, but I don't know where he get that stuff from. Well, let me tell you this, we used to be at, on a Sunday morning, having Sunday School Bible study and he don't be done read nothing, but he can tell you, well, you know, darker, he said over here. But he can teach that Bible, I'm telling you. The other one in the back? What? I got one in the back. Stand up, hold your head up, son. Don't Coleman the shame of nothing. That's what I'm talking about. That's one of, one of my boys also. And, oh, man, I got so many kinfolks and kinfolks here, kinfolks and don't forget Goma, now Goma's kinfolks too, remember my church at Oak Street. Sir? Who back there? Shay? My daughter-in-law is back there too. Wave your hand. Let them see you. This a day is my day. Keep it short, my daughter said, you know, they tell me, hey. I will, and I just want to tell everyone, I say, how much I appreciate you. And Ms. Abbott, you know, we've been together a long time and, you know, when you told me your mom had passed, that was, she was a hundred and five, a hundred, a hundred and one, and that was a long time I've been knowing Ms. Abbott. And mayor, I just want to thank you for this day. And anything you all need, especially that one over there, chair and teeth, come to my house, but anything you need, we're gonna have ham hocks, collard green casserole, on the mayor's, on the mayor's day, ribs, baked chicken, barbecue chicken. Fish. Are you kidding? The mayor was eating a piece of hot chicken one day, I just got it out the thing. He put it in, I said, we should take this in the house. He said, oh, I'm gonna get a piece of this. He put it in his mouth, he's, huh, huh, huh. I mean, he was trying to get that chicken out of his mouth. But anyway, mayor, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you and staff and city of Birmingham. Anything I can do to help anyone, give me a call. Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you.
So, everyone, don't leave. If you could just stand right here, instead of trying to move you out, we're gonna take a picture right here, everybody.
I want to tell my council, thank her too.
Thank you, Mr. President and council for your patience this morning. That concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, mayor. Happy Jimmy Coleman Day, everybody.
All, everyone has have the day off since this Jimmy Coleman Day.
Counsel, without objection, will suspend the rules for presentations from Council Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. If everyone with the Holt Foundation would come up, Mr. Joseph Holt. And as Mr. Joseph Holt makes his way through the celebration of Mr. Jimmy Coleman, I just wanted to kind of, oh, you're good. Just wanted to talk about a little bit of what the Holt Foundation is doing in terms of teaching young men and young people the art and skill of carpentry, so.
Hey, how you doing? I'm Joseph Holt with the Holt Foundation. I wanted to pass out some pamphlets, we didn't do a PowerPoint. I felt like this, the kids with me would be a better PowerPoint than me bringing one and doing all that on the screen. The Holt Foundation is something that I created for teenagers that can have opportunity to try to get some hands-on skilled training at construction, construction jobs at different areas in the community, to try to teach skilled trade, the skilled industry through me talking to different companies like Bradshaw and Gore and things of that nature. The trade industry is collapsing and they need more people. And so, I just want to share one thing, you can read it at your leisure, but I want to share the vision of the Holt Foundation that we wrote. At the Holt Foundation for Change, we envision a future where every young individual has the opportunity to gain knowledge and hands-on skills trades, paving the way for more, for a more skilled and prosperous community. Through our initiatives, we aim to create a lasting impact of the lives of the youth and contribute to the overall development of society. And that's what this is about. So many young men are at my house, under the age of eighteen, going on to twenty-something, they don't know what to do. Birmingham Promise is great, one of the greatest things that started, but that promise ends once they get out of school. They go on to college. What about the kids that drop out? What about the kids that don't have anything that they don't know what to do or figure out? That's what this is for. And the only thing I'm asking for today, I'm not asking for any money or anything, I'm asking for your influence to give me a seat with the mayor. I'm asking for your influence to just make a call and say, hey, we think this is a great idea, where I can sit down with him and see if he got an old school bus in the back that they're not using, that they may not want to do nothing with. Maybe it's not working that good, I get some donations to fix it. But I was at three kids and I'm at twenty-five. These are all kids off the street, they have no education, some of them dropped out, some of them got G D, things of that nature, but I'm trying to teach them to put down the switches and how the wire switch. I believe careers can stop crying. But if we can get, if I can get a bus and take them to Bradshaw and Gore job site, say, see, you can do this, you don't have to sell pills, you can make thirty dollars an hour. You don't have to do this, you can do that. And they're listening to me. And so, I just want a seat at the table with the mayor. I called the office, there's no knock on him, he's very busy, but the secretary tells me he's very busy. I just want your influence, say, hey, we don't, we don't know Joseph Holt, some people may know me from Facebook, one of the people I look up to, Ms. Alexander, she's here, Mr. Moore made a call for me to be here. I just want to sit down and say, hey, these guys, there's several of them, they want to have a pipeline to Alabama Power, they want to have a pipeline to Bradshaw and Gore, you have a connection, can you help me take a boy to go to Alabama Power and say, hey, they want to learn how? I tell them, hey, it's a lineman make over thirty-seven dollars. What's a lineman? They want to know. But I don't have, in, in, teaching the world God, they say, build a contemporary bridge from then to now. I don't have the bridge to build to now for these young men. These are not boys that are A B on the road, let me get this straight, they're boys off the street, but they're tired of that life. They look at me and say, you're a contractor, I want to know how to build a house, I can teach them. But I don't have the power to know Alabama Power president. I don't have the power to know Bradshaw and Gore president. I just ask for your influence so you can say, hey, mayor, let's just give him a seat and see if we got a bus in the back that this man can use his bus to drive these boys to Lawson to see Joseph Hollins, where he can try to help them get a scholarship. I believe that careers can stop crying, but every boy in the promise has only four years. But once they get out, do they still deserve a promise? I believe they do. And that's all that I came to say. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for the opportunity to give this word and I really care about them and it's very passionate to me for these kids. And that's all I want to say. If you have anything you want to ask, I'm here to answer the questions. Kobe wanted to say something.
Hello. I was just saying, Mr. Holt is really in the streets trying to make a difference and we need your help to make that difference. Thank you.
Counsel Smithman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Do you have a, are you a five oh one, C three?
Yes, this is legit, it's a barcode.
Oh, no, I want to say you weren't legit.
No, no, no. I get, I say that, but I get that all the time. I have some people that want to help and they said, Joe, people come all the time and they don't have their stuff together. This is together, it's go to a nonprofit account. When you scan the barcode, it pulls the website up. So, we've applied for grants and those grants require that you have everything together.
Perfect, perfect. Are you a United Way partner?
No, ma'am. I'm trying to get that together. And I thank you for that question because there's a lot of things that I don't know what to do.
Yes, sir, okay. I wonder if we can get you connected with somebody, maybe with I E Os to help you out for things you may be missing, so I don't know, somebody's here for you. Do you have, your contact information is on the website? Your contact information, your email?
There's email on the back of it, it shows email, everything's on the website, there's linked, the barcode, everything, and then anybody need my number or anything, you can get it. Mr. Moore has, it's on the website as well.
Okay. Because I want to connect you with the president of Dunn Construction, I was in leadership Birmingham with him. So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna set something up and Dunn Construction, their office is in Birmingham, so maybe we can figure out, maybe through the B R T or the transit system, while we try to find you a bus, maybe get y'all some passes, it doesn't cost much. We'll figure out how to pay for the passes and maybe that way y'all can get there and see how else we can get you all funding, but I will commit to that to try to connect you with whoever I can because I really believe what you're doing is good. I have a young boy close to me that just told me, hey, I don't think I'm gonna go to college, but I'm gonna be electrician, very smart. And I, I agree with you, in school, a lot of times, just because you don't make As and Bs doesn't mean you're not intelligent or motivated, it could be just the way you learn, the way you're teaching, honestly, sometimes how your teacher feels about you, which may be biased. So, I thank you for what you do. Thank you, Councilmore, for bringing Mr. Holt here and I look forward to helping you out.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Counsel Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Holt, I'm gonna connect you with Strive Birmingham, India Easly, they have a, they have a current fiber optics class and forklift operation class going on, so that's the connection that you need to make, it's in Woodline, so definitely connect with Strive Birmingham, they do a lot of workforce development.
Awesome.
And so, I'm listening to you talk about the lineman class, which is taught at Lawson State, and so, that's the connection that you need to make with Lawson State workforce development to find out when is the next lineman class. I was just looking at that information. And so, those are some connections, as Counsel Smithman said, like with Strive, they have transportation that they offer, childcare, so definitely put you in contact with these organizations that are doing some real robust workforce developments. Salvation Army, Ms. Jahan Quinn. So, it's a lot of moving parts that you, you know, that you're not aware of. I would be glad to pass that information off to Councilmore to give to you, but I would definitely tell you today to connect with India, India Easly, at Strive Birmingham. I got a current fiber optic class going on right now and forklift, forklift operator. So, it's a lot of moving parts, you know, that people can tap into, you know, with these good jobs that the, that the mayor with the recompete grant, it's, it's a lot of moving parts. When I look at, I know Council Woods does a lot of workforce development, but I've seen a lot of things out there and what, what a lot of workforce development organizations are doing, they are offering that childcare, that critical piece that people need childcare and transportation, so I'll pass that information off to Councilmore to give to you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Alexandra.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you first, Council Woods, for giving us this opportunity. Moore, I do it all the time. Councilmore, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to hear from Mr. Holt today and what he does for our community. As we talk about, social media doesn't always bring the best of things, but it has brought the connection with you and to know that the work that you're doing out there in the community. He does rehabbing, he does rebuilding, remodeling of homes, and so, to see him want to give his gift, his talent, back into children that are not his own, it is very important to me and so, I'm excited. When we talk about Lawson State, that's the crown jewel of D seven, got the president on speed dial, so you're gonna be connected, okay? And definitely, I know Counselor, Mr. President and I, we do, we serve on the M P O and I know they have transportation and other opportunities that they can bring from funds through the state of Alabama, so that's something I would like to see, to get you connected with that as well. So, this is Mr. Transportation right here, so hopefully he can lead me in that direction where we can give you that type of assistance to the young men that you're working with. As you said, there's opportunity out there. There are jobs that you can go and get, Alabama Power, different organizations, different craftsmen, they have these opportunities for our students. And as you said, everybody doesn't go to college, everybody doesn't go to the military. And Birmingham Promise is a wonderful program, but you made a great point today, often that stops at a certain point, and what about the children that don't have that opportunity? So, thank you. I'm just appreciative of all of the counselors for the support you want to give and the work that we're giving. This is why presentations are meaningful, this type of presentation, so thank you, appreciate it.
Absolutely. So, we have with us in the audience this, this morning, the president of the Birmingham Water Works Board, she's there in the pearls on the second row, Ms. Teresa Huffman, she wants to connect with you in relationship to the Birmingham Water Works. So, stop by and get her contact information. We know that, you know, transportation is a huge barrier for even folks who have, you know, skills for a job, so that's something that we will continue to push on and we'll try and make some connections to, to, to fill that gap for you. So, thank you, Councilmore, for being here. Council Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counselor Moore, for this introduction and hats off to you for what you're doing to train our people up in the construction trades. I think with, you know, immigration being under siege, it's really imperative that, you know, we get our folks trained up and, you know, working in the construction trades has a lot of ways to grow, you know, from entry level to like really, really big bucks. I mean, living wages from day one, but, you know, the, there's really no end to kind of how much money you can make. So, I, I just think this is our heritage, it's what we've always done, we did it when we didn't get paid for it, so now we need to do it when we can get paid for it. There's a Alabama workforce training, the Craft Training Institute that was in Birmingham, that's now moved to Hoover, but they're tied, they're connected with the two-year coll-. that's now moved to Hoover, but they're tied, they're connected with the two-year college system, and they will be providing transportation. And the director is someone I can connect you to, uh, so that there is, you know, whatever practicum you provide through your projects, you know, if they want to get the, um, I think it's the N C R training, the certification training, that can be provided. And, um, I think one of their biggest barriers is getting people to pass the drug test. So, uh, employers are ready to hire, but can't if they can't pass it. So, um, anyway, I just think, you know, this is great in that we're gonna help you any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you. And?
Counselor Moore?
Thank you. Uh, and last thing I'll say is just thank you, uh, Mr. Holt. Uh, I know that you are no stranger to good work. Uh, you've been doing this for quite some time, like, uh, Counselor Alexander said, um, in terms of redeveloping, you know, rehabbing homes, uh, taking something that looks, you know, dilapidated and horrible and making it something beautiful, uh, is how I met you. Um, and so I think that you're doing the same thing with these young men as well, and equipping them with the skill that not only can get them paid, but can actually help them save money as well because now you know how to do this stuff for yourself, right? Uh, and so I just want to, you know, commend you on, on the work that you're doing and, and tell you thank you.
Um, I was gonna say on the last part you said, I want to thank everybody for, uh, a pledge and a commitment. But, um, it, it's not only to save certain things like that, but this right here can save their lives. And this, this is the most important thing to me. I have so many young men that come to me, um, and we understand where there's no vision of people perish, but the children perish. There's so many of them that lost, all they say is, I, I don't know what to do. I just want to do something so they hang with somebody and they pick up a gun. But if this can get them to see something visual, if you grow up seeing drugs, you're gonna do drugs. You're gonna sell them. If you grow up around band houses, you're gonna hide in them. But if I teach you how to, you can pick up this hammer, and you can make thirty thousand dollars to forty, fifty thousand, or you can start your own company, it will change their mentality. That's all I'm trying to do. Once you show them something different, they will turn from it, not all of them, but some. And that's all I'm trying to do. And I thank you for your commitment. Don't hold up too much more time. Thank you so much. God bless every one of you for your help. And Ms. Alexander, I love you. Thank you so much. God bless you. Thank you.
Counselor Moore?
Yes, uh, and now I'll have, uh, Ms. Regina Weathersby and her team to come up with the Blue Rose Foundation. And Ms. Erica?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Regina Weathersby. This is Erica Simpson, and we are the founders of the Blue Rose Foundation, um, to President O'Quinn, I'm sorry, to President O'Quinn and the city councilors. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you all this morning. The U S continuously has the highest rate of maternal deaths than any high-income nation. The C D C reported that black women die three times more often than their counterparts. Data represents eighty percent of these deaths are avoidable. Alabama ranks the forty-first state in overall wellness and health and the thirty-ninth highest in healthcare spending per capita. On November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, the Alabama Reflector posted an article describing Alabama's infant mortality rate. The report said Alabama's infant mortality rate jumped from seven, six point seven per one thousand live births in twenty-twenty-two to seven point eight per one thousand live births in twenty-twenty-three. A statistically significant increase and above the national provision of five point six for the same period. Black infants in Alabama continue to face a mortality rate over twice as high as white infants, a long-time problem for Alabama. The mortality rate for black infants in twenty-twenty-three was thirteen deaths per one thousand. According to the twenty-twenty census, Alabama was twenty-six point three percent black, with Jefferson County being forty-one point five percent black. Birmingham is sixty-seven point one percent black, with forty-three of its neighborhoods being at least ninety percent black. These numbers tell us that the issue of black maternal health is one that has an impact not only on our state and county, but more directly the communities here in Birmingham. The Blue Rose Foundation was founded to provide a safe space for black women and their families through the trajectory of maternal health, through awareness, education, emotional support, and financial assistance. Our services will include support groups for men and women, a monthly podcast, and monthly newsletter to raise awareness and provide information. We will act as a referral source for counseling with partner agencies. In the fall of this year, we plan to begin offering peer support through peer navigate, navigators, assisting women to navigate their medical experience. Educational classes, including infant CPR, and providing financial assistance to support families with the unexpected costs that comes with extended hospital stays, um, transportation to appointments, and other needs on a case-by-case basis. It is our goal to provide a financial endowment each year to assist the family with the cost of I V F treatments due to infertility or adoption due to the same.
Good morning. My name is Erica Simpson. It is a pain that feels unbearable, but one that is well-known to many black women. The challenges surrounding infertility, pregnancy struggles, unheard concerns, experiences from medical professionals that are both unkind in both word and deed. Despite my many pleas to my doctors, I lay in delivery, bleeding internally and in excruciating pain. I felt as if I was being pulled into a black hole, the hole of death. I felt that I had no more fight in me, and I said, Lord, you know I want to live to see my baby, but let your will be done. I expressed to my husband, if you have to choose, let me go, but keep our baby, let her live. It was the unforgiving realization that I was not alone in this journey that led me to ask, what was the purpose of my pain? The birth of my baby, Marley Rose, also birthed a vision. I reached out to my friend Regina and asked, would she be willing to partner with me in a movement? Regina had her own very traumatic, but also very different journey to motherhood. With Alabama ranking number three in the country for black maternal deaths, while sad, it's not surprising. As Regina and I look back at a trail of unused I V F medications, a headstone as a reminder of two short lives, an unexpected hysterectomy, the labor pains experienced as a miscarriage was coming to an end, we are still able to look ahead and see hope. The hope in the future in the beautiful brown eyes of our daughters, Nadia, Avery, and Marley Rose. We want to be their hope, and we understand if things change, we cannot wait for someone to save us. We have to save ourselves. These trials, pain, suffering, loss, grief, passion, this hope birthed a vision of the Blue Rose Foundation. As we embark on this journey, we ask that you reflect on our initiative and the need of services in our community, and that you would consider financial and community support to help us push this movement forward. The Blue Rose Foundation would like to thank City Councilman J T Moore of District Number Four for his support and financial contribution to our cause. Our vision is through a holistic approach. It is our goal to create a movement dedicated to black women in Birmingham, Alabama, and beyond, navigate their journey to maternal health. Thank you.
Thank you. And one thing I'll just say, uh, to, to each of them, um, Regina and Erica, thank you for the work that you all are doing to create this community, to support families in that way. Uh, I myself, you know, and my wife, you know, we had a similar experience where our first pregnancy, uh, did not go as planned, right? Um, our doctor visits were not the most pleasant. Uh, we didn't have, you know, um, a lot of information or a lot of people to draw from uh, when we lost our first child, right? Uh, and it was a very traumatic experience. It was a very lonely one. Uh, and it was one that, you know, we felt like we were the only ones that, you know, experienced it. We didn't know that this was such a common thing, um, because nobody really talks about it. And so, you know, hard conversations, very deep conversations, but conversations that need to happen nonetheless. Uh, and people need to know that there's a community that they can, you know, connect to, uh, that will be able to support them. Uh, and I'll even just, I mean, I've talked to you all about this, even with black men, understanding how to support your spouse or your significant other in the hospital and in the doctor's office when they're having these conversations, what to say? How, how to, you know, really stand in the gap for them, uh, when you're going through these different, you know, uh, pains or, or trying to express that, hey, something's not right. Uh, we know that, you know, there are certain folks in the government that feel like, uh, black people have a high tolerance for pain, and so, you know, uh, sometimes it gets dismissed. And so, uh, being able to have a community that can equip you with information and, you know, support, uh, on how to navigate these spaces is imperative. And so, uh, really just wanted to say thank you all for your support, or the work that you all are doing.
Thanks. Um, I'll just add one, one, um, suggestion. So the, the city of Birmingham, through our e- innovation and economic opportunity department, has a program called BOLD. Um, I think it's, uh, Building Opportunities for Lasting Development is, is the acronym. Um, but through that program, um, we, the city of Birmingham has supported a number of organizations, including organizations that do work in this arena. So, uh, want to point you in that direction. Um, Birthwell Partners is specifically one of the, um, is a organization that, um, works, uh, as, uh, doulas, um, to, to help mothers who are going through pregnancy. So, um, just want to make that connection there for you. And, um, you know, perhaps they can offer some suggestions, but, uh, thank you for the work that you do. It's really important.
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, Ms. Clark, do we have any announcements of boards and agencies?
No, sir.
All right, we'll read our statement on conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read, and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, could we through, please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Okay, our consent agenda starts on page two with items two and three. Page three, we have items six and seven on consent. Uh, note on item number seven, we'll start with, uh, line five from the bottom, it should be IMS dash I seek solutions. And the sixth line from the bottom, it should be IMS dash I seek solutions. And also line seven should be IMS dash I seek solutions. So we're putting a dash behind IMS and adding the I for I seek solutions. Page four, item eight, as well as item ten is on consent. Page five, items eleven, twelve, and thirteen are on consent. Please note the changes for item eleven. Uh, the total amount will change to twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Uh, we're adding a thousand dollars to item one, Jackson Olden High School, and we're adding three hundred dollars to number three, Tuggle Elementary School. Uh, again, that total amount has changed to twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. And note that on item thirteen, it was approved by Budget and Finance. Over to page six, uh, continue with the consent agenda with items fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. Page seven, consent agenda continues with items seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Uh, please note that item seventeen was recommended by Budget and Finance. Page eight, items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five are on consent. Uh, item twenty-two should be withdrawn from the agenda. Page nine, we have items twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one on consent. Page ten, items thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven are on consent. Uh, page eleven, items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three are on consent. Please note that on item thirty-eight, that address should change to three forty-six instead of three fifty-six. That's three forty-six, Ninth Street West. Page twelve, items forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine are on consent. Page thirteen, items fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two are on consent. Page fourteen, items fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-five are on consent. Page fifteen, items fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight are on consent. Page sixteen, items fifty-nine, sixty, and sixty-one are on consent. Page seventeen, items sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five are on consent. Page eighteen, items sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine are on consent. Page nineteen, items seventy-one, seventy, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three are on consent. Uh, page twenty, items seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, and seventy-eight are on consent. And we conclude the consent agenda with item seventy-nine on page twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we please remove item number fourteen on page six as well as item number fifty-three on page fourteen?
Any others? Some more?
Item thirteen?
Item thirteen, that is page five. Any others? Counselor Abbott?
I'd like to remove item fifteen on page six. And item sixty-seven on page eighteen. And I wanted to ask a question. I don't really want to take these items off of consent, but items fifty-four and fifty-five are traffic signals and street lights and all kinds of part, it sounds like equipment and parts. And I wanted to know if that goes along with item fifteen?
No, ma'am, they're, they're completely different. This is just their actual operating money that they need for street maintenance, streetlight maintenance.
Okay, okay.
They're not the same. They're two different items.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We also have, uh, one item that's, uh, marked as a public hearing item that's on the consent agenda. That's item number two. Do any members of the public wish to remove item two from the consent agenda? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion on the consent agenda. Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
Williams, Smithman, Counselor Smithman. Okay? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Consent agenda is approved. Item one, please.
All right, one second, please. Item one, in order to further mend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number two thousand twenty-four dash eleven, to change zone district boundaries from M U H mixed-use Hyde District to Q C two qualified general commercial district filed by Nate Fuss, applicant representing the owner, Out Parcel LLC, for property located in ninety-one eighty-six Parkway East and situated in the section one, quarter section two, township seventeen, range two west, three five two oh six. In the hearing of ownership, pardon, motion, please.
Remove approval?
All right, this is a public hearing, uh, zoning case, so Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Ms. Spurrell, will you come and read our case for us, please?
Yes, ma'am, good morning. My name is Kim Spurrell. I serve as the Natural Hazards Administrator for the city. The item before you is Z A C twenty twenty-four dash eleven. Um, this property is located in the Roebuck neighborhood at ninety-one eighty-six Parkway East. The request before you today is to rezone the property from mix- The request before you today is to rezone the property from Mixed Use High, MUH, to C two, which is our general commercial district. The applicant is requesting to rezone the property so that they can construct a Mavis Discount Tire Store. Our current mixed-use high zoning classification does not allow this use. If you recall, over the summer in two thousand twenty-four, we updated the uses in our mixed-use districts and automobile service was eliminated from our mixed-use areas. So, that's why the applicant is requesting to rezone the property to C two. Um, so this particular business will primarily serve as a retail store for tires. They will also sell brakes, shocks, struts, exhaust systems, have oil changes onsite and fluid replacement, but they will not be doing any engine work. All of the tires will be stored inside and removed once a week and the cars will not be stored outside. Um, they do plan on operating Monday to Friday, eight AM to six PM, on Saturday from eight AM to five PM, and on Sunday from nine AM to five PM. Um, this property and all those that are adjacent to it are also zoned Mixed Use High. The city's long-range land use plan has identified this parcel as Mixed Use High. Um, as I mentioned, if, if this is approved, it would be rezoned to C two. And there are two conditions in C two for an automobile service use. And those are, number one, that no visibly disabled, abandoned, or inoperable, inoperable vehicle shall be stored on the premise. And number two, no vehicle to be serviced shall remain on the premises more than fifteen days. Um, the site plan that was provided does show um, over the maximum amount of parking. Um, they are providing thirty-seven parking spaces and the maximum parking for that site is fourteen. Um, so the applicant will either have to incorporate some low-impact design techniques onsite or they will have to apply for a variance for the parking overage. Um, the landscape architect for the city did review the site plan. Um, and they will require one tree per forty feet of street frontage along Parkway East and Roebuck Plaza Drive. Um, all permits and ordinances in regards to stormwater will apply for construction at this site. The property is not located in a special flood hazard area. Because the property will be an out parcel on a larger tract um, and their driveway will connect to an existing parking area, um, an access easement should be recorded on the plat to allow them to cross that property line. Um, the applicant met with the Roebuck Neighborhood Association on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the vote was fourteen to one to approve this rezoning request. Um, the applicant met with the zoning advisory committee on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the committee voted unanimously to recommend this request with the following Q conditions. Uh, number one, if approved, the applicant must provide an access easement upon recording of the plat. Um, number two, if approved, due to the excess parking of twenty-three spaces, the applicant must incorporate low-impact development techniques such as bio-retention cells, vegetated swales, extended detention systems, infiltration trenches, pervious paving, or dry wells to reduce runoff at a rate established in the City of Birmingham Engineering Design Guidelines. And number three, if approved, the conditions that I mentioned before must be met. That no visibly disabled, abandoned, or inoperable vehicle shall be stored on the premises and no vehicle to be serviced shall remain more than fifteen days on the premises. Um, on December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Committee um, heard this request and they voted to recommend this request to the full council with the same Q conditions. Um, that concludes the staff report. The applicant is here if you have questions for him.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Is the applicant here and would you like to come forward and tell us any more about what you're doing?
Good morning, Mr. President and Council. Uh, my name is Nate Fuss. I'm a civil engineer here on behalf of the applicant. Um, I think Ms. Pearl gave a very good um, summary of what we're planning to do here. Um, as you mentioned, um, just a few months ago over the summer, we were zoned by right, but due to the, the change in ordinance, uh, then no longer allows automobile use. So, that's why we're seeking this uh, rezoning. Um, we're looking, it's the Roebuck Shopping Center where the, the Planet Fitness currently is looking to uh, build this uh, Mavis Tire kind of at the intersection of Parkway East and uh, Shopping Center Drive there. Happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Do any members of the council have any questions regarding this request? Seeing no one, I guess you're in good shape.
Alright, thank you.
Um, are there any members of the public who are here to either ask questions or to object or support? Seeing no one, Mr. President, I believe we're ready to rock and roll. I, I'm still trying to figure out why this property was ever zoned Mixed Use High. It made no sense whatsoever. So, this actually makes sense.
Agreed.
It's a shopping center.
Right. Mr. Clark?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Alright, item one is approved. Next item, please.
Uh, should be item four. A resolution assending to the vacation of the following, one hundred and fourteen thousand seventy-four square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Fulton Avenue Southwest and Forty-Ninth Street Enslie and perpendicular to South Park Road located at twenty-seven ninety-six South Park Drive on behalf of legacy prep owners so that the owner can consolidate the property in hearing of our ownership parties, case number S U B twenty-four dash eighty-eight. Motion, please.
Remove approval?
Um, this is also, this is a vacation of a right-of-way. So, Chairman Moore?
Is it? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Low, if you can come up.
Good morning. My name is Roger Low and I serve as the subdivision planner for the city of Birmingham. And this item subdivision case two thousand twenty-four, case number eighty-eight, which is a resolution to determine whether the city council will give us a cent to the vacation of one hundred and fourteen thousand seventy-four square feet of right-of-way so that the owner can consolidate his property. One-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. On November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission recommended the approval of this vacation to the full council. On December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Community Development Committee forwarded this vacation to the full council with a favorable recommendation. We do have representation here to answer any questions that you may have about this item.
Yes, can you please have the applicant to come forward or representation? And state your name and
My name is Roland Jackins. I'm a surveyor with Dynamic Soul Solutions. Uh, the request here today is to vacate this right-of-way to incorporate it into the school. It's currently unopened, um, and it's partially used for ball fields from the old Boys Club. And this will really help the, the prospects of this school and what they want to do there.
Uh, are there any questions from members of the council? Yes, Mr. President?
Um, so I would assume that this uh, right-of-way is, was intended as an alley, a platted alley, but is, was never opened or utilized. Is that the?
It, it was intended as a, as a roadway.
Okay.
But it was never opened. Uh, what, what little of it is being used is parking for the old Boys Club. And the majority of it ends in the woods and it just dead ends into nothing at this time.
Okay, got it.
Alright, are, are there any members of the public that would like to speak uh, for or against this item? Seeing none, uh, I will say that this is a good use of the space, uh, since they're opening up the legacy prep school, um, in the old A.G. Gaston Boys and Girls Club, uh, building. So, Mr. President, I'll pass it over to you.
Alright, Mr. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Alright, item four is approved. Item five, please.
Item five, a resolution to waive the right-of-way vacation fee in the amount of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cents for approximately one hundred and fourteen thousand seventy-four square feet of the right-of-way located at twenty-seven ninety-six South Park Drive, Birmingham, to redevelop legacy prep you survey because of the positive economic impact the project will have on the city. Birmingham, City of Birmingham, case number S U B two thousand twenty-four dash eighty-eight. Motion, please.
Is there any discussion on this item? This is also for legacy prep. Yes, sir.
In addition to what he's read already, um, with this item on page four of the resolution, there's a typo. It should say legacy prep rather than U.S. Steel Corporation. But this is, um, they're seeking the waiver of the vacation fee of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-three cent for the case of S U B two thousand twenty-four, case number eighty-eight, legacy prep resurvey. On December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four, the Economic Development Committee and, and Budget and Finance Committee forwarded this forwarded this item to council without a recommendation.
Okay, questions from the council?
I did have one question. It's pretty simple. What is the positive economic impact of this project?
Well, the, the current use is none. And the way the, the property sits now, it, it sort of gathers bad intent, if that makes sense. It's a dead end. And this, this will change that drastically. It will be a, you know, where children learn. And it will transform that piece of property entirely. And this right-of-way being integral to, to the design, it's very important that this happen. And the eighty-seven thousand, given that it's a, it's a school, it's, is an enormous amount of money, uh, that can help them, you know, greatly.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Smithman?
Uh, why was there no recommendation from the committee? Okay, 'cause I'm looking at her, Abbott. Okay, no worries. I was just wondering.
Whoa. Same question for Budget and Finance. Do you, you guys remember this one coming before you?
No, I'm, I guess in the packet, it's wrong. Yeah, the packet's wrong.
Says we did not recommend it.
It's okay, it's probably just was a typo. Okay.
Okay. Everybody got that? Alright, uh, if there's no further discussion, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item five is approved.
Thank you.
Next item is item number nine.
Item nine, page four. An ordinance authorizing the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of six thousand six hundred and nine dollars and eighty-five cents to execute a quick claim deed of Build Urban Prosperity Incorporated for the sale of property legally described as law eleven, block twelve. According to the survey in Smithfield Estates, first edition, first sector, as recorded in map book ninety-two, page two, and approbate of Jefferson County, Alabama, map book ninety-two, page two, in the office of the Judge Approbate Jefferson County, Alabama, located at fifteen oh eight Chaucer Street, Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one four, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure municipal improvement leads in accordance with section three dash one dash four C of the General Code of the City of Birmingham. This is an item of permanent operation and I need you see to pass it today. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark? Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Smithman? Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams? Council President Protem Alexander? Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Our motion on the item, please. Item is before you.
Alright, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Alright, uh, item nine is approved. Next item is item thirteen.
Thirteen on page five.
And, do you want to hear these together? Yes, uh, so let's do item thirteen and fourteen together, please.
Item thirteen and fourteen. Item thirteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city and Faith Chapel Christian Center, doing business at Faith Chapel Cares LLC in an amount not to exceed one million one hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred and ten dollars under which Faith Chapel will provide services to the city by providing homeless outreach, case management, mailing addresses, counseling sessions, recovery meetings, independent living skills, training, and day shelter, including access to laundry and shower facilities to up to fifteen residents at a time to address the challenges created by the intersection of poverty, mental illness, addiction, and homelessness. Item fourteen. I'm sorry. Oh. No, tip was taken off. Item fourteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city urban Alcoa and an amount not to exceed one million five hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars under which Urban Alcoa will provide services to the city by providing homeless outreach, which will include providing care coordinators to monitor progress, make referrals, provide counseling, and offer assistance, providing support groups, AA meetings, social events, classes, and other activities in providing transportation to unhoused citizens to address the challenges created by the intersection of the poverty, mental illness, addiction, and homelessness. And it's both items together, I guess.
Uh, so discussion on this item. Chief?
Yes, sir, Counselor. Any questions from the counselors? We have, uh, Dr. Megan Venable Thomas available if there are.
Yeah, I think, uh, we would appreciate, um, Dr. Thomas just coming in and telling us, reminding us about the overall, um, strategy to address homelessness in the city. So, Dr. Thomas?
Good afternoon, counsel. Um, I'm Megan Venable Thomas. I serve as Director of Community Development for the City of Birmingham. Um, we also have some, you, you have a copy of the presentation, um, that I can, I'd be happy to walk through just to remind us of where we came, where we are, and where we're going. Um, so if you look at the first slide, um, or the second slide, it should be on page two, just talking a little bit about our approach. So, what we've been doing has been a little bit different than what we've seen in the past in the ways that we're really thinking about creating a comprehensive approach to supporting folks who are experiencing homelessness, but really across the housing spectrum. So, we focused a lot on sustainable homeownership, but also emergency shelter, which are critical tail ends of our housing spectrum. But as you can see in this kind of pipeline, there are also a lot of other places where we need support like temporary housing, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing. And also in between all of those, there are spaces and places where we have to bolster our capacity so that people are prepared to move from one place to the next. So, if someone's moving from the street to moving into shelter, moving from shell, emergency shelter to moving into um, affordable rentals, moving from rentals into homeownership, we need things in all of those spaces to support people. So, if you move to the next slide, you can see a little bit more of what we've been doing in the city already in some of these spaces. So, if you look in the temporary space, just a few examples of what we've done over the past couple of years. We support about twenty-five hundred beds in overnight emergency. We support homeless service prevention for about a hundred people over the last year and a half. We also do rapid rehousing where we've supported over twenty households. In the transitional space, we supported the weigh station, um, which create forty units of transitional housing specifically for youth. And then, as you can also see on the sustainable homeownership front, we've done a lot in supporting, you all have, have done a lot um, in approving over two hundred and forty-three units for, uh, for homeownership. Uh, over eleven hundred for rental. Um, we've completed over a hundred home repairs, um, in our home, uh, critical repair program. So, there's a lot that we're doing across the spectrum, but as you can also see, there are a few gaps here that we're really trying to fill and that we found we need to fill. If you move to the next slide, you can see some of the new innovative approaches that we've really brought to the space. One, our community-based public safety team and call center, which is our heart team, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Um, but also supporting the purchasing of the micro shelters to include what we're here today to talk a little bit to include what we're here today to talk a little bit more about. Two new providers in the space being able to do wraparound service provision as well as managing housing, which is really critical when we look back on the goals of what we were trying to achieve, not only safe sleep, not only providing wraparound service provision, but also bolstering the capacity of our providers to do this work in our city and to do it more sustainably. And then also thinking about what we can see in the future as far as a place or space where our housing providers across the spectrum can be prepared to provide services that meet all the needs. Um, and that's something else we're interested in in the future that we'll talk about more with the winning of our five million dollars from HUD for the home ARP. So if you move to the next slide, you again can see kind of this overall of what we're, what we've done and what we're doing here today. So our ask for Home for All Faith Chapel is the operational cost for them to do the wraparound service provision and management of this pilot. For Urban Alchemy, you see here the cost, um, as well as our sources. And then the units that we would potentially be supporting. The community-based public safety initiative, which was already approved, as well as the pallet shelters, which were already approved. So really so you can see a full breakdown of what we've done, um, and then where we're trying to go. To provide a little bit more color to some of what we've already done, um, since the November training and kickoff with the HART program with Urban Alchemy, which is only two months, they have hired seventeen new employees. Um, they have engaged, uh, over two hundred residents. They provided services to over four hundred residents. And they have placed, uh, over ten folks or neighbors with providers. And so when we think about the amount of impact that they've been able to have in such a short time, it is quite exciting to think about how with their own wellness village or micro shelter village, how they will be able to build their own pipeline from their HART program to their micro shelter village in the future. So if you go to the next slide, um, our two finalists are Faith Chapel again and Urban Alchemy, which we're here to talk about today. You might recall that there was a third finalist, AIDS Alabama, who we were also working with. We determined that we would hold off on AIDS Alabama's project at the time, at this time, due to the cost, um, the overall cost of all three of them to be able to move forward. But also to be able to focus on continually investing in the weigh station, which we supported last year, and really being able to bolster the capacity of that project to be able to provide services to as many of our youth that are experiencing homelessness as possible. And so we're moving forward with these two, or we're requesting to move forward with these two today. Um, if you look at the next slide, it's just kind of a high level rendering of something that you could potentially see um, on the Faith Chapel site, which is the Second Avenue North and Tenth Street site that we are considering where these micro shelters would go and where these wraparound services would be provided. If you go to the next slide, you see that overall request. And then again, some of the breakdown of those services that you heard, um, in the overall reading that would be able to provide and not be limited to, um, engaging individuals in the community to connect them with resources, personalized guidance. I think that's one of the really big components of this program that's critical is that it is concierge service. So one-on-one really with folks who are going to be staying here to identify what their needs are, to respond to them and then be able to provide a more sustainable pathway moving forward. Um, that's one of the things that we've seen as far as folks being able to uptake more sustainable housing, particularly if they're chronically unsheltered, is being prepared to manage and navigate what that might look like to manage your own housing on your own. And so, um, we know that there are other supportive services that are required. And data shows, research shows that this helps for uptake. I would like to add that this site is for fifteen residents, um, at a time. And so again, we want this pilot to be for a year. However, if people are ready before that, we see that they would be able to move at the time that they are ready and we foresee that there will be several folks who will be prepared to move on in this timeframe, um, to be able to support more than fifteen at, at, at any given, um, or over the course of the program. If you move to the next slide, you see a, a, a deeper dive into the budget breakdown around what some of these services, uh, some of these funds would support. Again, really a lot of the work that would happen on the site, the staff that would be managing the site, um, that one-on-one concierge service provision, which is critical and obviously at a living wage for the folks who are going to be supporting our neighbors on site. If you go to the next slide, then you'll see a similar breakdown for Urban Alchemy and the services that they would be providing. Again, um, their site would be, we have not identified their site yet. Where, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. Um, but because they are a new provider to the space, we are supporting them with identifying what might be the best site for them, um, for a number of criteria, um, at the intersection of space, um, ownership, uh, ability to provide quality services to residents, ability to support the operations and operators that would be managing the site, as well as other sorts of, um, landscaping, uh, you know, making sure that the site in and of itself is appropriate for the shelters. Um, if you move to the next slide, you see again a deeper, uh, breakdown of what these funds would be used for on this site, um, much of which is the wraparound support for the neighbors that would be living there as well as the overall operations of the staff that would be managing the site. Um, there's a little bit more here for Urban Alchemy who are actually doubling the amount of folks that they would be working with. One of the reasons that, um, they've kind of figured out their, uh, economies of scale because they've done this in so many other places already, that they understand what it takes, the cost, to be able to apply. And as you increase the number of residents on a site, um, oftentimes, uh, the cost can decrease uh, because much of the expenses are focused on that startup, those startup costs. Um, if you move to the final slide, you can see here a high level timeline. Where we are currently, um, is we are here bringing these operational budgets to council at the beginning of February. We are looking, because we have already identified Faith Chapel's site, that we would be able to begin construction, which is minimal, um, really just structural around being able to uh, identify electrical, be able to connect to it, um, to be able to place the foundations for the micro shelters, which is really minimal bearing. Um, these are the types of things that would need to happen on the site, some grading. Uh, and then that would allow us to go through the process of identifying, um, who would do that labor to then be able to set up and be prepared for opening by the summertime. As you can see, Urban Alchemy's window is a little bit wider, uh, because we are still in the site identification, um, phase. However, we believe that we will be able to identify a site, um, by next month, which then would allow us to do that same process as Faith Chapel, uh, to have construction begin, um, in the summer and, uh, residents be prepared to move in, in the, um, the end of the fall, beginning of the winter. Again, some of these are estimates because we have a process for having to identify contractors, be able to do the surveying of the different sites and understand what is there. Um, and so some of that work we will do and learn what is happening through that process. But we will come back before council with the proposal for the actual, uh, design and development phase, which would be our third phase prior to, um, being able to actually do that construction and then move into opening. Um, you also see here the community-based public safety initiative, which is ongoing now. You already approved that previously. And then we're also working to think about more permanent supportive housing options with that five million of ARPA funds that, or excuse me, that five million of home ARP funds that we were awarded from HUD, um, which we will be bringing forward to you in the future to talk about development partners for what that, um, funds can, what those funds could be used for. At this time, I will take a pause because I've said a lot, um, and, uh, I'm happy to answer your question.
So Mr. Clark, it's been brought to my attention that we need, may need to handle these items, um, separately, a little differently. Can we, do we need a motion to reconsider to separate these items and discuss and talk about them?
You, you called up both, but we can just deal with one. You did a motion on the item, so what was on fourteen? Thirteen, thirteen, and then we can move on to fourteen after that.
Okay, so. Yeah. At, at, at this time, let's just, let's just talk about the, the Faith Chapel project, um, and reserve any questions related to item fourteen, um, separately. So Counselor Abbott.
Well, actually, my question is about both, but it's about the funding sources. So I noticed that the funding sources for both of these items are different, very different. And can you explain why? Because basically they're doing similar work, but, so just explain.
Yes, absolutely. So our funding sources, um, are limited. Uh, and so we had available funds within our emergency rental assistance program as well as our CARE CV to be able to apply to this work because it qualifies for our housing services. Um, but we also had additional ARP funds, um, which were also limited. So we used our available sources to be able to apply comprehensively across both of these sites.
Okay, good. That explains it. I, I just wondered because it seemed odd when they were doing the same work.
Understood.
All right, Counselor Clark.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I'm, I'm glad to see this work moving forward. I think, um, having something on the ground is really gonna help, you know, change the NIMBY into YIMBY. So that's what I'm most looking forward to, something people can actually see, see how well it's run and managed and how it, how it's functioning.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you. Um, so on, in one of the, in the Urban Alchemy contract, there is a.
Counselor Williams, let's just reserve comment on the item thirteen at the moment.
I don't know how else to articulate my question.
So we'll discuss item fourteen separately, but at this time, let's just talk about the Faith Chapel project.
Okay. In the Faith Chap, in, there's another contract that's about to come up where they talk about, there's a per night fee. My question is, in the Faith Chapel contract, is there also a per night fee like the other contract we might talk about?
Thank you. So no, there's not. And so one of the things that we thought was important about exploring this program and taking the RFPs from the different providers was to allow them to build out what they thought their programmatic and operna, operational needs were. Um, and so we really have supported each of the providers to think about what they need on their site versus the other. And so, no, the, if, things that you don't see here are not part of, um, both. So they, they different, they both have different, um, operational budgets and we're supporting them separately based on what they've requested. So no.
All right, thank you.
All right. Counselor Smithman.
Thank you, Mr. President. How much of this, um, of the amount is going towards salary?
Percentage wise or just the, so for Faith Chapel?
Yeah.
So two hundred and fifty three thousand four hundred and thirty six is going towards salary, wages and insurance for Faith Chapel.
Okay, and then I may have missed this. What are the other partners, uh, they're gonna use for the wraparound services?
Yes, so, um, there's a number of partners that, that are supporting this. Um, Food for Our Journey is one of their partners who will be providing, uh, food and support. Um, I think they're working with a number of other partners. I can get you a list, um, of all of the partners. There's a multitude of them that would be supporting on site.
Okay, perfect. I see they're gonna have access to laundry facilities, which is awesome. Where is the laundry room gonna be? Like, how many washers and dryers will they have?
Their laundry facility is on site, um, at Faith Chapel. Urban Alchemy also will have an on-site laundry facility. Um, if you'd like to know the number of.
Cause I'm thinking, is it like dorm style or is it like one big laundry mat concept?
I will ask Ms. Deborah Blalock from Faith Chapel to come forward. She can talk a little bit more about that.
Okay, when I mean like dorm, like maybe like three units will have a laundry room or four or five. That's what I mean by like dorm style.
So there's one laundry room.
Okay, gotcha. So one on the area, okay.
That has a multitude of washers and dryers.
Okay, that's all.
But, um, I would ask Pastor Deborah Blalock to come forward. If you have a list of partners?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have partners that we've already been working with for the last six to eight years.
Okay, good.
Um, Ross Recovery, the Firehouse Shelter, Kahaba Medical, we work with Work Faith already. We also partner with HIMSS. They deal with workforce development. We, we work very closely now with Community on the Rise. We work even closer with them when we have people sleeping in the shelters, AIDS Alabama, Alethea House. Of course, Food for Our Journey, we work with them now and we'll work with them more heavily when we put these, uh, pallet shelters, micro shelters in place. And we also work with Be Kind Ministries already now. They provide a mobile unit that brings clothing and hygiene and different things like that to not just us, but others that are in need. We also work with, um, partner with First Presbyterian, uh, IP C Church. They funded some of the efforts, uh, and also brought in kind things to us as well. We work in partnership now with Danham Project when we have people and we need to refer them out. We go, we work with Danham Project and also Youth Towers. When we have the young adults that come through our facility, we have a partnership with Youth Towers where we're now able to work with them to get hotel rooms, things of that nature, because we don't have sleeping facilities. So we just work with them with hotel accommodations. So the, and volunteer lawyers have also been a part. So we are already working with people over the last six to eight years. So we've built quite a few partnerships already.
Okay, perfect. Um, I think that's amazing. You have all of these partners here because a lot of times with people, I think in general, no matter what your situation is, um, just transportation issues and having all of those wraparound services right there for people really makes it very convenient, easier for them to get treatment. So I'm really excited to hear about that. Um, are there any conditions to living there, especially people who may have addiction issues? I asked this at Budget and Finance.
I'm gonna let Ann respond to that. She's been working with us closely on this proposal.
No, there isn't. We are a low demand, low barrier, um, micro shelter project. So we will accept anyone and surround them with, with the wraparound services.
Okay, when we were in Kansas City, Missouri, you know, there's two Kansas cities, so right next to each other. Uh, they, we went to, um, a micro shelter for veterans, for example. And so one of the conditions was you had to stay sober while you were staying in the facility. So is there any type of condition like that?
No, so I, I foresee, um, this project with Faith Chapel as being really a boutique service. So the folks that come and stay with us, they're gonna have a variety of different barriers, but they're gonna want to stay with us. And so whatever they, issues they present with, we're gonna, we're gonna help to provide those wraparound services. So no, that, that wouldn't be a barrier to service.
Okay, well, I mean, like there was, they were saying like you, you can't use while you're on the property, for example. That's what I mean by sobriety.
Drugs and alcohol would not be allowed in the micro shelter site.
Yeah, they were saying it was very like, very strict, like as soon as they find out you aren't sober, you can't stay there, which honestly is really fair, cause that, the feast of purpose of you getting treatment, honestly. Um, and then, well, I think you already asked about the outreach, but okay. Thank you. I really appreciate what you all are doing. I think this is gonna be a great project.
So I have a question. Um, so over the past few years, um, folks from EBSCO, Pac Health, General Machinery, Perry Supply, UniFirst, uh, and several other businesses have reached out to my office regarding, um, you know, the number of folks who are living on the street in, in this area. Um, and you know, the, they're, they're con, they're concerned about their, their businesses and, and their employees and customers coming into their businesses. And, um, so, um, they're, they're dealing with the issue of people experiencing homelessness um, in proximity to their business. And the concern that they have expressed is, is that, you know, they don't want to exacerbate that situation. So, um, give me some insight on how this micro shelter site helps to, uh, improve that situation.
Yeah, um, thank you for that. And we've had several. Yeah, um, thank you for that. And we've had several conversations over the last year as well, myself, as well as Elena Melton, um, with folks that are in businesses around particularly the Faith Chapel site. And one of the things that we, again, have seen, research and otherwise, is that when people have places to go, when they have places that they feel, um, that honor who they are, that are dignified and support them, um, they then too also care about what is happening around the site, um, that they'll be participating in. And so we believe that this program will help to alleviate some of the other challenges that are already existing, um, and some of the neighbors that are already in the space to actually get the support that they need to be able to be moving in a different direction.
All right, thank you. Any just further discussion on item thirteen? And Ms. Clark, um, we're ready for the vote, I believe, on item thirteen.
I'm sorry. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll say nay.
Please note my abstention.
All right, so, um, now we have item fourteen.
I'm already ready, so I just need a motion.
Sound move.
All right, we're open for discussion, discussion on item fourteen. Counselor Williams.
Thank you. So according to the contract, that there's an additional per-night fee that adds up for Urban Alchemy that adds up to approximately one point five million dollars. Where is that going to come from?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? The per-night fee adds up to one point five?
The, according to the contract, there's a not included startup cost per person per night of ninety-four dollars?
Oh, ninety-four dollars, okay.
So if you do the math, that equals one point five million dollars a year. So where's the one point five million dollars gonna come from?
That's the total operating cost of the, the request for the operating budget overall.
So the rev- the, the revenue on this states that the total request is one million five hundred forty-one thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars?
Yes.
It said it does not include a ninety-four dollar per night, per person fee.
Oh, okay.
Not included. If you do the math on forty-five guests, times three sixty-five, times ninety-four, that's one point five million dollars, an additional one point five million dollars. So am I just reading this incorrectly in that the ninety-four dollar fee is? Where, where's the ninety? This says that the ninety-four dollar cost per person per night is not included. So where's this one point five million dollars going to come from? I, I think, I, I'll turn it back up. I think they're researching.
Okay, um, Attorney King.
It's my recommendation based off of thirty-six twenty-five A seven A three that we go into executive session for potential litigation.
Motion for executive session?
I need a motion.
I've made a motion.
Who's second? Okay, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman.
Aye.
Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Council President Potem Alexander.
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn.
Uh, aye. All right, so, uh, we'll go into ex- executive session and we will reconvene at the College Chair.
All right, Mr. Clerk, we're ready to reconvene. Could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. President Protem Alexander. Council President Alquim.
Present. All right, so we are, have item fourteen under consideration and we have a response to Council Williams' question.
Yes, so the budget that you're looking at was part of the original proposal. That ninety-four per night is not included in the one point five million ask. Or it's not additional to that one point five million ask. It is included as their overall estimate for what the cost would be.
All right, any further discussion, Councilmore?
Now, I just publicly want to say thank you to Urban Alchemy. I know there have been several situations that I've reached out to them about and they have come through for me. Really operating in a spirit of professionalism and excellence. And I've appreciated how you all have dealt with our unhoused neighbors in our city. And so I just wanted to publicly say thank you for the work that y'all are doing.
Thank you.
All right. Council Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'll also echo Councilor Moore. Because I got firsthand to see Urban Alchemy in real time with Artie and Dr. Michelle and the whole team out there. And just saw how all of these, these intricate parts move. So it takes heart. It takes people that understands and meeting people where they are. And it takes courage to want to work with vulnerable populations. So again, Artie, thank you for the work that you have come here to Birmingham to stand up with the Heart Project. Thank Ms. Dever. See her a lot over at the Wyalem Neighborhood Meet for the work that Faith Chapel is doing. And Dr. VT and your team, Corey, for the work, Elena. All of the work that you all have put in is, it takes a lot. Sacrificing your families, traveling to places and spaces to make sure that we bring the best practices to the city of Birmingham. I thank my colleagues as well. So I just encourage you all to go over there and visit Urban Alchemy's site to see how it's running in real time. And it's just grateful and awesome that they have gave people jobs. And these are good paying jobs with benefits. So again, thank you all. And thank you, Dr. VT.
Council Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. With Urban Alchemy, I want to see if I can get a phone call meeting or a meeting with you all. I do have panhandlers that would love for us to see what we can address with. And some homeless people that are under a viaduct. If you go past, you've probably seen Green Springs. And I know the mayor has tried to talk to him. So I really want to see if I can improve my relationship with you all. And I'm really happy the city is making a lot of progress toward this issue. I know it's taken us a while, but I'd rather us take time and research and have concrete initiatives and doing something haphazard or just having temporary solutions. And so I think it's important that the city takes care of all of our residents. Because these are really our transient residents. So I'm thankful for you all do, the patience and the wisdom and kindness that you guys have. And I look forward to seeing how we can impact other people's lives. And thank you, Dr. Thomas, for your work.
Thank you.
Councilmore, you have follow-up?
I just wanted to say this last thing. I know that right now Faith Chapel has a site which I'm grateful for. And I know that they're going to do an awesome job in terms of serving our unsheltered neighbors. And I know that Urban Alchemy is still looking for a location. And I really want to advocate for them to work in District Four. I really do. I know that to some may not be a popular opinion. It may not be something that most folks say, hey, I want this in my neighborhood. But the truth of the matter is, they are our neighbors now. They're currently there now, right? Without any type of services, without any type of help, without any type of wraparound, anything. And so I think that I want to be a champion for the work that you all are doing in District Four. Because I've seen your work. I've worked with you already as well, as your team. I probably bug y'all too much because I come over there. But I appreciate, again, the care that you all have. And so I really want to see if there's city property that is owned in District Four to service these individuals.
Thank you.
And I just want to say thank you to you, Dr. Thomas, for your work on this. I have been talking to residents who contact me about what the city, what is the city doing to address homelessness? And I've been talking about this whole Home For All program for, well, ever since you guys proposed it, which has been a minute. But more importantly, whenever I came into office in 2017, we were at the end of the inappropriately named ten-year plan to end homelessness in the city of Birmingham. Yeah, end chronic homelessness. So coming into office, I felt like that was one of my charges to say, okay, what's the next chapter? How does the city, what's the next steps in our process to addressing chronic homelessness? And it's taken us a minute to get there. But I really think this Home For All program is critically important to addressing the issue. Because what I have observed is that under, without that, what we do is, we chase people from one forgotten space to the next. Or trespass them and they spend some time in the jail and then they're back on the street and then they're back under the viaduct. And it's, does nothing to address the root cause of the problem or address the circumstances that have led to that individual living on the street. So this is a big step towards truly helping people figure out how to transition to permanent housing, ideally. But meeting those people where they are in the circumstances. And so, and the reality is, is that we're unlikely to be able to get everyone, reach everyone who's in those circumstances. But this is going to be a big step in the right direction. So thank you again. And thank you to Mayor Woodfin for supporting this.
Thank you.
All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Hold in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right, item fourteen passes. Next item is item fifteen.
Item fifteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents required for the city to complete a grant through the state of Alabama acting and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for grant funding from the Federal Carbon Reduction Program to upgrade signals on state and local roads throughout the city of Birmingham. The total grant award not to exceed one million dollars with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars matching funds required by the city for a term of twelve months. And authorize the mayor to take any and all actions and execute such other documents as appropriate and necessary in accordance with the terms of the contract.
All right, it's been motioned in second. And Councilor Abbott, I believe you had some questions about this item.
Yeah, my main question was, the purpose of this is carbon reduction. And I was wanting to know, not right now, but if we could have additional information on what else we plan to do about carbon reduction. Because I know we're installing stop signs all over the place, which every time you stop, you have to start back up again and you produce more pollution. So on one hand, we're going to fix it over here, but we're making a mess somewhere else. So there has to be an overall plan that y'all have. It's just that we haven't seen it. So I was hopeful that this would be the kickoff for us seeing your carbon reduction plan for the city, because I know you have one.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
So Council Abbott, I think this is the jumpstart to start off our whole carbon reduction plan for the entire city. As soon as these grants come available, we'll be more aggressive about going after them. So we can continue to do our long-range plans to reduce it. Yes, we agree with you.
That's if there are ever any grants available anymore. But another thing that we could do is plant trees. Because trees suck it up while we're producing it. And trees aren't nearly as expensive as all this stuff. And if the federal government does what they are threatening to do and just cutting out all the money because they're not interested, trees are still available for us to plant. But I'd like to know the overall plan.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to depend on the feds because they're not dependable. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any additional?
And thank you for the street locations, because we're all interested in that.
All right. Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the vote.
Hold in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item fifteen is approved.
All right, item twenty-two is withdrawn. So we go to item fifty-three.
Yes, item fifty-three, please.
A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Trane U.S. Incorporated doing business with Trane Birmingham for HVAC products and related services as needed at unit price on file in the office of the Assistant Purchase Agent for a period of one year contingent upon council approval of the city of Birmingham Public Works Department Partners Purchasing Cooperative Contract Number thirty-three forty-one. Motion, please.
I move approval, second.
All right, is there any discussion on this item? Okay, all right, no discussion. We're ready for the vote.
Hold in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Please never abstain, sir.
Okay, item sixty-seven, item fifty-three is approved. Item sixty-seven, please.
Item sixty-seven. Take it off, I'm sorry. Item sixty-seven, a resolution approving the payment to Edporium Incorporated doing business as Ed, Edporium Newton Town, Massachusetts for the purchase of one B Bot Hive Bundle or one Straw Bee Steam Classroom Robotics, one Flash Forge Adventure Three Pro, three D Printer Education Bundle, one Snap Circuit STEM Classroom Activity Kit and one Robot Lab VR Expeditions two point oh A R V R Standard Student Kit in an amount of eleven thousand fifty-three dollars and fifty-one cents at unit price on file in the office of the purchasing, Assistant Purchasing Agent for the Birmingham Public Library in accordance with Section three dash one dash seven, the Birmingham City Code.
I move approval.
All right, uh, discussion on this item, Counselor Abbott.
Yeah, I was the one that took this off because with eight hundred and seventeen pages of stuff, I couldn't even find it. So I was just wanting someone to speak out and explain what, what this is all about. The B Bot Hive Bundle was particularly fascinating to me.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so what's before the council is something that was approved back um, when we had the surplus that we did for the different libraries and recreation centers. So this is the STEM lab and upgrades for the Powderly Library.
Powderly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is this like a pilot?
No, it's already one there. This is to do add, add board things to that STEM lab at the library. So this is a library request.
Okay, so it's just one?
Yes.
Will there be more?
Potentially if we have funding for it, but this was dedicated just for Powderly Library.
I got that. I just was curious if there would ever be any more. But the answer is maybe if you find some money.
We'd love to work with you if you wanted to add more.
Okay, good.
We'd love that. We'd love to work with all the districts that we wanted to add.
I have to go to Powderly and see it first, the B Bot Hive Bundle.
Come on over there. We'll give you it too.
That's pretty cool. That was the only question was just, what is it?
All right, Ms. Clark.
Hold in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item sixty-seven is approved. That takes care of all of our agenda items. We're to new and old business. So Protim Alexander, you have your report.
Thank you very much. These are announcements for District Seven. Please, neighborhood leadership in District Seven, take note. We will have our um, semi-annual chat and chew with our neighborhood leadership. We're calling it What's Up District Seven? So we look for some very engaging conversation. This will be Thursday, February sixth, Lawson State Community College from eleven A M to one P M. So we're looking forward to having some great conversation and opportunity to talk about goals and objectives for the rest of two thousand and twenty-five. February seventh, Friday, the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association will meet at the Powderly Branch Library. And that's at thirty-three oh one Jefferson Avenue Southwest, and they'll be meeting at four P M. We have two neighborhood meetings on Monday, February tenth. That's the Powder, Powderly Neighborhood Association Meeting. They'll be meeting at five thirty at the Henry Crompton Rec Center. And the Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood Association Meeting will meet at six P M on Monday at the Oxmoor Community Center. If you have any problems with missed pickups for your garbage or your bulk trash, please dial, you can contact, you can send it in to three one one or you can dial two oh zero five six hundred thirteen sixty-nine or you can call the D seven hotline at two oh five three zero four one seven nine seven as well as to report illegal dumping. I do want to thank administration. We did have some um, hiccups in the Hillman Estate neighborhood. Uh, there was some confusion um, among some of the residents about the pickup dates and um, whether or not their bulk versus their regular trash. We really thank you. I real first want to thank those neighbors that um, made the call to action to be sure that we could uh, service them appropriately. And I want to thank administration. You all jumped right on that, that day. So thank you very much. I do just want to ask though, um, when you're tagging on social media, sometimes that's not very effective. Everybody doesn't read all those tags and they're not just on there all the time. So I do want to ask, uh, this, let's utilize some of the resources that we have that I just mentioned. You can report it to three one one or you can dial this number or you can call the office. So again, we don't want anyone to be impeded by their trash not being picked up. So thank you very much. Uh, Thursday, February eleventh, the Administration and Government Affairs Committee will meet at two P M in the council chambers. Today, hopefully you haven't been hiding under a rock, today is February fourth, Friday? And so it starts the um, session for Alabama State Legislature. And um, so we've given a lot of information, provided a lot of information about our uh, goals and targets for this legislative session. And we'll be talking a little bit more about that at our next Government Affairs Administration Committee meeting on Tuesday, February eleventh. On February fourteenth, I know we've got a whole week to go before we get to that. But I just want to make the residents of D seven um, to know that the men of Powderly will be hosting their two thousand and twenty-five Valentine for Seniors. And that'll be from twelve to three P M at Wiggins Park Recreation Center. Everyone is encouraged to dress in their holiday colors and attire. I guess that's red and white for Valentine's Day. And uh, there will be food fun games and um, lots of great fun. Just wanted to, to some congratulations. We don't do shout outs, but if we did, I'd like to just say that we do want to congratulate, we had some scholars that were um, received some awards and um, did a great job. And so congratulations to third grade scholar Emmanuel Perry. He represented Oxmoor Valley Elementary at the B C S District Math Derby and he won third place. I don't know about you all, but math was not one of my best subjects, so congratulations to this young man. Also want to give a shout out to um, first place Mariah Wright with the Green Acres Neighborhood. That's now a part of D seven uh, for the two thousand and twenty-five Birmingham City Schools District Spelling Bee. And you may ask, why are we noting this? I just want to be sure that we always give a shout out to our students that are really uh, excelling and doing great things in our schools. Last but not least, I do want to recognize Ms. Iman Bell. And she is a U A B student majoring in African American Studies. She has a three point five seven G P A. And um, she's a junior. She's a member of Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Alpha Phi Chapter. And also a member, I met her, uh, and I think you were with me when we met her. There was some Black Student Awareness Committee. And um, so she's shown an interest, wanted to shadow us today with city government. So thank you for being with us. We're very excited to have you. Thank you. That's my announcement. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Protim Alexander. Counselor Williams.
Thank you.
Um, Economic Development Tourism will be right after this, Ms. Clark, and uh, D N E. Um, Eastwood Neighborhood Association will be meeting Thursday, February sixth at six thirty at their regular place Habitat. And then Robug Neighborhood will be meeting at their regular place, February the tenth at six o'clock at East Precinct. Southern Framework Meeting Plan, or Plan Meeting, rather, is February the eleventh at six o'clock. And so that, um, in my district, the Crestline Eastwood, Crestwood South, um, this is a great time to um, go and see what is being planned. I know that in some of the Neighborhood Association meetings, we've had uh, zoning staff there. And there's a particular importance for the Neighborhood Associations to understand what is being proposed in terms of zoning because that, I, I think affects them, you know, it most direct, more, more so than, than, than many things. Uh, especially in those neighborhoods that, that where there's a lot of proposed development that um, that people uh, are opinionated about. And so they need to go voice their um, their concern or, or whatever on not having something zoned a certain way. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counsel Williams. Counsel Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Wyland Neighborhood Association Meeting is tonight at six P M at the Wyland Library located at forty-three hundred Seventh Avenue North. Thomas Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six thirty at the Mount Hebrew Baptist Church located at five oh three Fifth Street. And that's Birmingham, three five two one four. Cypico Finley Neighborhood Association will meet Wednesday, February the fifth at five thirty. And they have, have their meeting at the Cypico Plant Community Room located at fifteen hundred thirty-second Avenue North. And the North Birmingham Neighborhood Meeting will be on Monday, February the tenth. Six P M, the meeting will be held at the North Birmingham Library located at twenty-five oh two Thirty-first Avenue North. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on February the eleventh at one P M in the council chamber. Please submit your items via email by Wednesday, February the fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, no later than twelve noon to the following recipients. Gregory dot Stanley at Birmingham A L dot gov and Ashanta dot C F S at Birmingham A L dot gov. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counsel Tate. Counsel Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say thank you to all of our neighborhood officers that came to our uh, D six luncheon meeting with them. Uh, it was very productive and it was good to see everybody in person. Uh, Oakwood Place Neighborhood Association Meeting will meet today at four P M at Harrison Park Recreation Center. The Mason City Neighborhood will meet today at four thirty via teleconference. North to thisville will meet tomorrow at five P M at Memorial Park Rec Center. West End Manor will meet this Monday at five P M at New Hope. And the next Budget and Finance Meeting will meet this Monday, February tenth at three thirty P M in the council chambers. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February twelfth at three thirty P M here in the council chambers. We are still waiting on the short-term rental ordinance. Um, and so hopefully, hopefully, February twelfth will be the day. The uh, Neighborhood Association Meeting for this evening is Forest Park South Avondale at the Avondale Public Library. And it, they meet at six thirty. If you have concerns, we certainly want you to call three one one. But the My Be Him three one one app is much, much better because you can in, include photographs, you can describe the situation in your own words. And um, hopefully you will get the help you need. But it's a great app and I encourage everybody to put it on their phones. You can get it at the Play Store or the Apple Store and it's free. Free. You don't get much free anymore. Um, we're asking all residents of District Three to continue to visit our website for other updates um, besides these. And I would like to bring to the attention of the um, administration that there is still a big problem at the intersection of Green Springs Highway and Green Springs Avenue with unhoused people hanging out into the roadway. A lady stuck her legs out into the pavement as I was driving by and I was truly fearful that I was going to run over her feet. Now, this is ridiculous. If, if, you know, if it's allowed by the law, something's wrong with the law. Because these people are not in control of themselves at all times. And, you know, falling into the street in front of someone, if, if you're the one who runs over them, you're going to feel bad whether it's your fault or not. So I'm hopeful because the police officer at the Glen Iris Neighborhood Meeting last night said that they had been told to pull back on some of the things that they were doing instead of pulling forward. And we don't want to go backwards. It's an enormous problem. They stop traffic on a six-lane highway. It's just, it's terrible. And something's got to be done before somebody gets hurt. I mean, these are humans that we would be hitting with our cars. It's just, so I'm hopeful that there's something that can be done.
Mr. President. Sir, Counsel Abbott, so obviously Elena Melton, many members, members of the team are really aware of this issue. Part of what they're doing is working with the state because I don't know about the area specifically where you were in, but a lot of that space is state property. So um, just know that that is a, it's an intentional effort by the team to coordinate with the state on the areas that we technically don't have jurisdiction, but the areas we do, we enforce and then um, coordinate with the state to get some level of enforcement and awareness. So we'll lean back in on the area that you're talking about specifically.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's definitely state property because Green Springs Highway is state. But that intersection, you know, they're stopping traffic. Somebody's going to get rear-ended at the very least because they stop people who are moving. It, it's just, it's crazy, but it's a mess and the neighbors last night were just... That and the property that I'm going to send you the address of up the street where they've brought all their stolen grocery carts and stolen furniture and stolen mattresses and trash. And that property is all covered with that stuff and it looks awful. It doesn't belong to us. But I'm sure that we can find the property owner and talk to him about it, surely.
Yes, ma'am.
Just that area of Ross has just left us with a mess. Seemingly a permanent mess, but hopefully something can be done. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Moore.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, uh, happened Black History Month. Can I still say that? Okay, anyway, uh, Neighborhood Association Meetings, Englewood Neighborhood, uh, will take place on Monday uh, at five thirty um, at the Englewood Rec Center. Uh, we also have Robug Neighborhood Association that will take place on Monday uh, at the East Precinct. Uh, Airport Highlands will take place at uh, Pleasant View Baptist Church on Monday at six. And Woodlawn Neighborhood Association will be at the Willowood Rec Center on Monday at six P M as well. Um, we are working to eliminate a lot of our carbon emissions over in the Nor, Norwood Neighborhood. We will be planting trees uh, in partnership with Cool Green Trees and the Birmingham Squadron uh, from one to four P M on Saturday, February eighth. Uh, player appearances will take place from two thirty to three thirty at the Norwood Community City Center off of Norwood Boulevard. Um, let me see, we also have the Black Male Summit that will be taking place this Saturday um, at the uh, Hilton Birmingham Downtown at U A B. Um, it starts at nine A M and ends at three P M. If you are a black male in the city of Birmingham, please make sure that you show up. Um, it's going to be a lot of great conversation, a lot of meaningful um, convenings. Uh, and I just feel like it's going to be a lot of great information that uh, we all need to implement. This will be their third annual event and so uh, excited for them. We also have the Englewood Yo, Yoga Studio who will be meeting up this Friday, uh, February seventh from six to seven thirty P M uh, to be able to have the Men Zen Yoga. Um, there are four stops, four spots still remaining. Uh, to learn more information about how to sign up, go to englenookyogastudio dot offeringtree dot com. Uh, we also have our um, Community Development Meeting that will take place today at two P M in council chambers. Uh, so I would love to see you all there. Uh, we also have the Park and Recreation Board Meeting that will take place tomorrow at Legion Field at nine A M. So if you are interested in uh, participating or being in attendance for that meeting, please show up. Uh, and then I think the only other things is, you know, I also wanted to, you know, bring a couple of things to the administration's attention. Um, and I'll follow this up with an email to you all. But uh, one of the challenges that we're experiencing in District Four is of course eighteen wheelers and trucks. Um, there is a building, a, a building, a business over in the Collisville Neighborhood um, that has eighteen wheelers that are blocking residents from getting into their driveways, um, their parking. And, you know, um, I think it's, you know, a lack of space for the business to be able to move trucks in and out of their, their space. Uh, and so in the meantime, as they're, you know, navigating those eighteen wheelers, they're parking in front of residents' homes um, and causing inconvenience. So would really love to get some assistance on, you know, addressing that. Uh, and then also just, you know, trying to figure out, you know, what could be done to, you know, uh, get less eighteen wheelers to drive through our residential spaces. Uh, we've had a couple of eighteen wheelers to get redirected in residential areas and get stuck. Um, and that has been a major issue for quite some time. And so um, really trying to, you know, get that situated. Uh, and then one of my residents over in the Maple Grove Neighborhood has a sinkhole that uh, needs to be addressed as well. And so um, would love to sit down and talk with you all about what could be done to address that also. Um, let me see, and then last but not least, I want to say, you know, thank you to my colleagues for, you know, you all's support. Um, and, you know, really just great information towards um, the Hope Foundation uh, and assisting them. Uh, I think that it's a worthy cause that Mr. Joseph Holt has taken up and really want to see him be successful in reaching young men and giving them a skill that they can take with them uh, for the rest of their lives and get them off the streets uh, from crime. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counsel Moore. Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to ask for U C for a resolution of sympathy for the family and friends of Ms. Leela Hobson.
Hold in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, before I move the resolution, I just want to say that she was the godmother to... Before I move the resolution, I just want to say that she was the godmother to one of my best friends who passed away at the ripe age of one hundred seven. She was a retired educator and long term Tittysville resident. And, um, she was feisty as can be almost to the end. So a real inspiration concerning longevity there. Uh, if if you would, uh, motion on the resolution, please.
Second, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you. Uh, Neighborhood Meetings in District Eight, we've got the Fairview Neighborhood Meeting today from five thirty P M. Via conference call. You can call our office to get the dial in number at two oh five, two five four, two three zero four. Also, the Thomas Neighborhood is meeting this evening and and they gather in person at Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas at six thirty P M. So tomorrow, February fifth is two oh five day twenty twenty five. Just a lot of twos and fives in that. A lot of two oh fives. So you can come celebrate by spending your lunch break at the Birmingham Museum of Art and learning how musicians from Parker High School shaped the sound of American jazz in the nineteen thirties. Uh, it's inspired by the current exhibition called Determined to Be, the sculpture of John Roden, who's also a Parker graduate. The talk will be led by radio host, writer, and founding director of the Southern Music Research Center, Bergen Matthews, who will connect the city's musical and visual arts legacies. The fun starts at eleven A M. And there will be goodies, uh, for attendees as part of this year's celebration of two oh five day. The Alabama Symphony Orchestra will host two free concerts this week, uh, in honor of Black History Month. The first one is Thursday, February sixth, twenty twenty five at seven P M. In a throwback to the golden age of hip hop, Shaheed and DJ Supreme will join Alabama Symphony Orchestra for an evening of rhythm, rhyme, and flow. I know we've got two rappers up here on the dais, so y'all will be featuring tracks specifically written for this collaboration. This premiere performance blends the energy of hip hop with the grandeur of symphonic music. And it's designed for young people, but it's good for kids of all ages. So, uh, I won't give details of the other one, but encourage you instead to visit alabasymphony dot O R G to keep up with their great programming and, uh, some special things they're doing in honor of Black History Month. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
That sounds like an awesome concert. I'm looking forward to that. Councilor Moore.
Yes, uh, I forgot to make mention, uh, five forty five this morning, I had to wake up uh, because I heard a lot of celebratory noise taking place in my living room. And it was my daughter Ari who just turned three today. And her older sister who had gone into the refrigerator, stolen all the cupcakes that were supposed to go to her class. Uh, and they were having a sugar high, um, early this morning. And so, um, that was not what it was intended for. It was intended for her class, but I wanted to just say happy birthday to you, Ari, uh, on your third birthday.
Get to break the rules when it's your birthday. Thank you, Councilor Moore. Uh, I also want to thank you for, uh, giving me the honor of kicking off our annual call for lifeguards. You know, we'll give you cash money, a house, a car, genie in a bottle, whatever you want. I I'm just joking. But anyway, in order for us to get these, uh, pools open, we we have to have lifeguards. So if you're interested in being a lifeguard, um, for the summer, we're we're hiring and, um, you can actually be able, we will even train you to be a lifeguard. So if you're interested, please contact Terry Sewell. Not Representative Sewell, um, same name, different person. Terry Sewell at two oh five, two five four, two one eight nine or two oh five, two five four, two three nine one. Uh, also, the next Academy of Civic Engagement, our ACE Academy, uh, begins in March. H ACE is a seven week program designed to give you, give residents an in-depth, behind the scenes look at how our city government operates. Apply at W W W birminghamal dot gov backslash ACE. Also, Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service is preparing for its upcoming Community Emergency Response Team Class this spring and is currently seeking volunteers. CERT training includes disaster preparedness, disaster fire suppression, basic disaster medical operations, and light search and rescue. You can register via email at by sending an email to pub ed at birminghamal dot gov or by calling two oh five, two five four, six five, six zero or through the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Facebook page. So the the basic idea with CERT is to have, uh, people in the community, residents, who are who spend time training with Birmingham Fire and Rescue, um, to sort of be, you know, the the boots on the ground in the neighborhood, um, and can help residents in the event of one of these, um, disaster situations. Kim Phillips in my office went through the training, uh, and, uh, Ms. Earlene Prince, actually, before her. And it's, it's a, a great way, uh, to get to know our Birmingham firefighters and what they do. Um, and also, uh, be ready to help your community i- if the need arises. District Five residents, um, the District Five Team will host its annual District Five Planning Meeting on Saturday, March first at nine thirty A M. At Jones Valley Teaching Farm. We invite District Five residents to join us. Please contact my office at two oh five, two five four, two six, seven nine, two R S V P. And finally, if you live in Eastlake, Forest Park, South Avondale, Wauhoma, Gate City, Oak Ridge Park, you have a neighborhood meeting coming up within the next, uh, seven days. So please reach out to my office, again, two five four, two six seven nine, to get additional information. And finally, Transportation Infrastructure Committee will meet Monday, February tenth at two P M. If you have items to submit, please contact kimberly dot phillips at birminghamal dot gov. And that concludes my announcements. Mr. Clark, we do have some public speakers.
Michelle Tracy.
Should come to the mic, please remember to state your name and address and you'll have three minutes. The time will be displayed on the screens behind us.
My name is Michelle Tracy. I own a home at forty eight thirty two Seanick View Drive. I've been contacting Birmingham, um, employees, uh, since the end of twenty twenty three. I have a memo that has gone to the mayor's office and all the people that are denoted. Address forty eight thirty seven is a rental property. There are numbers of parking violations. Most of them have been taken care of, but at one point there were eight people living in a three or four bedroom property with one bathroom. Now, that may be okay according to, um, Ms. Thomas, Katrina Thomas. Eight people are allowed to live in a single family dwelling residence with three or four bedrooms, sleeping two up with one bathroom. That's acceptable. I did not know that when I moved to Birmingham from Texas and I s- I used to live in Shelby County.
Speaking to Mike.
I'm sorry. I used to live in Shelby County, so I am not familiar with Birmingham law. Uh, I am now being given all the codes and I will be keeping it logged for the next six months. And if if my requests do not get looked at properly, which they have not, when I call three one one, there is still an outstanding, uh, ticket, one six five, six eight, seven one three, that has had no resolve since May ninth of twenty twenty four. I have contacted and emailed everyone. I will no longer call. I will call three one one. I will leave my name, the complaint, and I will get a number. And then I am going to send everyone that I normally talk to on the phone and email. I will no longer talk to them. They will not give me any information. They are unfamiliar with the coding and the laws. Uh, I'm not. I have looked most of them up. Uh, I have had it with this neighbor. Eight people living in that, that area is is not okay. And that, the house that sits there is the house at Elder and Seanick View. It is the most dangerous intersection I've ever seen. It has one of those flashing lights and then everybody has to stop. And people cuss at each other and yell and get out of their cars. And one day, there's gonna be a shooting there for sure. So I don't know what to do about these people. Nobody in the city of Birmingham will help me. And Katrina Thomas did call me at three thirty yesterday after I had talked to the owner of the property. I had to get the information on this gentleman. I called him and he said the city of Birmingham has not officially contacted him one time with my multiple complaints. So please read over this. Um, I'm gonna give this six months and then I'm gonna retain an attorney. So you guys decide how you want to handle this, but this is not acceptable to me. And I have put seventy thousand dollars into my home in capital improvements, and I do not appreciate being treated by the city of Birmingham the way I have been treated. And I do not appreciate that the owner was not contacted. I talked to him and he said he has not been contacted. So somebody's lying. It's either a city employee or it's the owner. I don't have any way of knowing any of this unless I start to depose people and take everyone to court. This should not be necessary and I should not have to be here right now. And all of my complaints are very much listed. If you want emails and pictures, and I'm going to have a log. And it's gonna have pictures and emails, and it's gonna be for the next six months. And if nobody does anything about my complaints, then you have given me no choice except to go to court or to move. And I'm not moving. Now, I appreciate your time, but I need some cooperation and help by the employees of the city of Birmingham. And I need some licensing information in regards to the man who has the house. He says he has a business license. But when I call to find out if there is a license pertaining to that property, that's not how you track it. I've even called Jefferson County. And I know my time is up and I think this is truly a shame that I have sat here since eight o'clock and I get three minutes to talk about my problem. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. President, I wanted to say something about this because eight people can live in a single family house if they're a family. But if they are unrelated people, only three unrelated people, according to our zoning ordinance, can live in a single family zone district. So whereas what Ms. Thomas said is true, if they are like a family, if they're unrelated people and I read what you wrote, this, I read it and it doesn't sound like the people living next to you are related to anything except maybe.
There is a mother and daughter related. The rest of the people, I don't know where they come from. And when I go over there, they say they stay there. And this is mostly a black family and the guy that stays there was white. Now, I have fussed so much, okay, that it's crickets right now. And I had a, an inspector come out because I wanted somebody to look at their fence because it's dilapidated and animals can get under it. And then I wind up taking care of the animals. That is not my responsibility. I am tired of this. And if you want people to move to this town from other cities, then you need to have rental agreements that are not only verbal but written. There are only supposed to be four people, according to the gentleman that lives there, I mean, that doesn't live there, that owns the property. That is not what we have seen. And now I am going to do surveillance. I'm gonna take more pictures. I'm gonna document everything. And that includes everything with the city. This is not acceptable to me. And it shouldn't be acceptable to any Birmingham resident when you cannot get a handle on the problems and when you call the city and you call the city and you email the city and you email the city. You're asking me a question. I asked Ms. Katrina, I said, how, Ms. Thomas, do you know that those people are related? Because that's what they told me. So you have laws on the books for the city of Birmingham. And they can't ask questions and the owner's never been contacted. I gave Birmingham the information about the owner. They asked me. Ms. Ishikoo actually asked me, did I ask if, when I talked to the owner, if he had a business license? Because the licenses aren't tied to the address. They're tied to a person or a business and then the address. So it can't be looked up that way. So you have a very faulty system in trying to regulate renters. And if you want to get rid of problems with crime in Birmingham, know who lives in the houses.
Thank you.
Yeah, so administration. I don't really know how to phrase. So on the business license aspect of this, because this, now I have a lot of questions, but on the business license aspect of this, are we not able to look up by address and see if someone has a valid business license?
Yes, sir. We are.
Okay, so. Okay, so can I get a follow up on what's going on on this from you guys, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I'll be glad to provide you any emails because I have been told that they cannot look that up without a business name or a person's name connected. So I got that information and I emailed that to them. They have all of it. I have pictures of the illegal parking. Police came out three times and it only warned people.
Next speaker, please.
Willie Jenkins.
No tickets issued at the East Precinct, and they laughed at this.
Excuse me, Ms. Tracy, your time is expired. We're moving on to our next speaker.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Willie Jenkins, number five, Southwood Drive. I'd like to thank, uh, uh, Jimmy Coleman, congratulate for his, uh, retirement. Been knowing Jimmy Coleman for a long time. Also, I would like to announce that Great New Andy Al Baptist Church in Cottageville, Van Johns, Ms. Johns, having the anniversary. Also, my pastor from Oak Street Baptist Church is speaking at three oh, I mean, uh, at two P M. Uh, on the Thursday, Sunday in, uh, February. We invite y'all to come. And also my prayers go out to Legion, uh, Evans, Metta Simpson. Been knowing this lady for many years and and, um, Bishop Herman Simpson, been knowing the family a long time, but it's hurting me because she went to Carver High School. She was a young lady. That's already a young lady. And my prayers go out to her and, uh, Bishop Herman Simpson. Also, we, um, want something did, and Ms. Smith, one of my neighbors here, was talking about the old Carver High School in the neighborhood. Need to do something for the neighborhood. Carver High School been there for, I came out of Carver nineteen seventy three, Carver High School, graduated from Carver High School. And it's still sitting down. And I don't know what they, you know, gonna fix it up or something, you know. Well, you know, just want something did in Cottageville to fix up Cottageville, Neighborhood Cottageville. My concern about the Cottageville neighborhood, old Carver High School. I know we were having our fifty reunion and we went up there and old Carver still standing there. It was, it used to be a trucking company. Now it's just a plain old Carver High School, you know, graduating, you know, from Carver. And I hope somebody that, uh, that do something to it, you know, and fix the Cottageville of, you know. And I just, I'd like, I'd like to say, you know, um, I'd like to say, um, that, um, um, that I went to William, um, William Irvin Evans. That was at my church, Oak Street, last, uh, last week, I mean, uh, Oak Street Baptist Church. Yeah, that was at my church last, uh, week, you know, man, you know, they were there. I mean, I've been knowing the Evans family a long time and And so, and, um, and my prayers go out to the family and some of the staff of the, they came on. But my prayers go out to the family. And that's all I'd like to say. And, um, y'all come to see the Mina Parade, well, like I said, on the Thursday, Sunday in March, we're going to be at, we, what's the chapter? This coming Sunday, um, uh, not this coming Sunday, but the Thursday, Sunday, we'll be at, um, at, um, Galilee Baptist Church. And we'll be singing over there and we're going to be going around, we, we going back to working and singing and going, doing God's work, you know, singing and God praising. And, um, and we're going to go, uh, going back, you know. And also, my pastor, like I said, we love my pastor, Reverend Irvin, Pastor Irvin from Oak Street Baptist Church. Reverend Connor retired, but we love our new pastor from Oak Street Baptist Church. We invite y'all to come hear him one Sunday, you get a chance, you know. And First Lady, Ms. Irvin. And, um, we like them, but they've been there, been there a pretty good while. And I've seen and liked them, you know, loved them, you know, he, I, pastor, and we love him very much. And I like all that, I like all that, that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, uh, last, lastly, want to recognize our officers on duty as always. Officer Pinkard, officer, also have Officer Fikes and Officer Shelby with us today. Thank you for, for being with us, we appreciate it. Council Williams?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned.
Usually on Tuesdays, I'm the first, uh, person amongst the council, at least, to, to get in the office. Um, and I get here usually around 9:00 just to make sure, um, that if anybody's got any questions ahead of the council meeting, uh, we have everybody here in place to do that. Of course, there's the council meeting that usually takes a couple of hours. Um, then I try and have a little break for lunch. And then the afternoon, we usually have pretty booked out with meetings. So today I met with a local business that's, um, dealing with an issue. And also went to a nonprofit organization that, uh, teaches music education. And, um, this afternoon, still yet to come, uh, I'm going to drop in on the Alabama Jazz Hall of Fame Board Meeting. And after that, I'll be going to, uh, one of our Neighborhood Association Meetings. So Tuesdays are pretty busy for me.
And that's just one day?
Yeah, that's just one day. Usually on days that I'm working my other job, I spend a fair amount of my evening time uh, getting caught up on emails and, um, you know, any calls or text messages that folks may have sent me. So, um, and I'm honored to have the ability to serve my constituents.